Again, notice to everybody that this meeting is being recorded digitally. So respectful to everybody, please. First question, does anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, announcements?
Yeah, we had a few really good things the past few weeks. We had, the library had a few things, ditting with Tony and You Can Pastel Paint and visiting with the presidents. That all went over very well according to the library people. There were some really nice pastel paintings that I saw. The townwide yard sale was this past weekend. I tried to hit most of the stops because I'm one of those people, I can't help it. I love finding good treasures and stuff. But the seniors had lots of stuff. So much stuff. But everyone, to my knowledge, that I stopped at the houses were doing well and people were stopping at the houses even though we were competing with some other towns. So it went pretty well and hopefully a lot of people purge junk out of their basement. Like everyone else. This weekend, we have coming up Saturday is non-such night, starting at four o'clock. The weather's looking really good, so hopefully it stays that looking really good. I've tested out all the pieces and parts. I have a big huge sixteen foot screen. We're gonna be showing the Ghostbusters Afterlife. I have an extremely loud speaker that I'm actually really impressed with. I'm thrilled with it. We have a few food trucks. We're gonna have tacos and hot dogs and chili and cannolis. And the Girl Scouts are gonna have a smores fire and everything so we can stay warm too, because I don't feel like freezing. The Boy Scouts will be selling popcorn and we have some glitter tattoos and a few other fun things. Like Bill Shea will be there with Acto One. So the band Neon Alley will be playing and again, it starts at four. The movie will start at around dusk, so probably around six thirty, seven o'clock. And again, it's always free to enter and free to park, so come on down. Bring a camp chair and probably a blanket to just stay warm while you're, while you're watching the movie. Then the following weekend, we have the Harvest Breakfast, which is the Hubbardson Scholarship Committee. That's on October sixteenth from eight to eleven at the Rod and Gun. They always put on a very lovely breakfast. I happen to be on that committee as well. It's super good. They have sausage and bacon and ham and all kinds of eggs and stuff. But it, it does raise money for the scholarships. We usually give away around three every year. So it's, it's a really good event to go to. And again, if you fill your belly that morning, it's, it's good. October sixteenth from eight to eleven at the Hubbardson Rod and Gun. And then the library has two stories for Halloween on October twenty-second. The first one is from five to six and that's for ages eight to twelve. And the second one is from six to seven, ages thirteen up. And they're basically little Halloween scary stories that are gonna be read to kids from a storyteller. And they look really, like it is cute. It's, it's gonna be a good time. So have your kids come. Again, the first one's eight to twelve year old and then the second one's thirteen and up. And then on October twenty-sixth at seven P.M., we have our super fun special town meeting that I hope everyone goes to. That will be at the Hubbardson Center School in the gym. Then the following weekend, the Lions are having their Haunted Hay Ride. The twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Friday and Saturday, from five thirty to nine thirty at Rieta Ranch. They are still looking for skits, so if you're interested in doing a skit, you can go to hauntedhayride.com. I believe it is. It's on our town, it's on our town Facebook pages and stuff like that. But if you're looking to do a skit, but they will be doing both nights, the hay ride and the walk. Then there's the Halloween Parade that Flo puts on on ten thirty-one, excuse me, ten thirty at one P.M. Bring a bag of candy and your kids, drop them off at the fire station and come down to the school and they'll march themselves down and it's, it's so cute. I hope people come and watch them and just kind of like wave, it's always, it's always good.
What time is that?
That's at one P.M. on October thirtieth. It's a Sunday. And then afterwards, all the kids go into the gym and they have like a little magic show for the kids. And it's, it's a good time for all the little guys. So if you have little kids, come down and the bag of candies to donate to go towards all the people that give out ungodly amounts of candy in the center of town. And that's what brings in the last thing for this month, which is the block party and trick or treating. So the block party is over here at the police station from four to eight and trick or treating is from five to eight. And again, there's lots of people. Come on down. They'll be giving out candy. It's a fun time at the block party. There's always a DJ and all kinds of stuff. And that's sponsored by Bill Shea and the police department put on a really good job. And that's enough for October.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'd like to have a motion for unanimous consent on the agenda item. It's only one item and that is the accepting the town clerk's resignation.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent and gent of town clerk's presentation.
Motion made.
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, thank you. First item in the business is Damon Schmidt from Royal Sun Farm. He's gonna be discussing he needs a manufacturing agreement.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Damon.
Hi. Yeah, so basically I was looking to do amendment to the HCA and just add the words "and manufacturing."
And manufacturing.
Yeah, so I know I don't have a building yet, but at some point we will. But um, so I'm in kind of a situation where we have a frozen product, so we can't sell that to retail stores. So there's just, you know, maybe ten or so manufacturing companies that we could actually sell our product to. So what we're, basically what we're gonna have to do is send our product out to get manufactured. So they'll take like our frozen marijuana and they'll send it, we'll send it out and companies will turn it into like vapes and edibles and things that are sold in the stores. So then after they make them, we need to bring them back to Hubbardson and store them here and then sell them to stores. So our problem is, is even though we have a cultivation license, we can't send our product out to a manufacturer and have them send it back to us and receive it unless we have a manufacturing license. I know that sounds crazy. So I don't actually have to build anything out, I just need to get the license and then we can take the product back. So I don't know if that makes any sense.
Okay.
Okay.
So. That was my spiel.
What would that entail as far as?
Um.
Adding that to the?
Legal would have to, town council would have to draw up an agreement adding that language to it for, to add manufacturing to it, so.
And it is, he is allowed to do that, correct? So any objections?
This is basically?
Questions from the board?
Chair, I have a question.
Okay.
So the question I have for this gentleman is, you said you don't have a building. Does not have a building, so where would you store this product?
Alright, so we?
If it's frozen or whatever it is.
So we have trailers right now where the, where the frozen product is, like a freezer trailer, like you see on the highway, the reefer trailers.
Yeah.
And then we have a security trailer, like a separate trailer where we store.
And that's in a secure area?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll probably have to hold like a community outreach meeting. So you generally, it's, it's a long process just to take it back, but you know, at some point I can, I can take care of the scheduling of that. But it's like we did before, except anytime you go like get an application, you have to do this.
Mm-hmm.
Is the plan to go eventually into a building? Or are you gonna stay, is your plan to stay in the trailers?
No, we, we have the area. We already perk test, so we got a successful perk test. And then we're just gonna make like a thirty-six foot wide by maybe two hundred foot long building.
Okay. So the, the goal is, is to go into a building eventually?
Yeah, yeah, so basically where the trailers are right now, so it's kind of interesting. So we, in the security trailer, we have like our electrical hookup. So we, we basically have to like cut the trailer into pieces and then we're gonna leave the electrical stand there and then we're building, the building around it.
Around.
Yeah. So it's, we put so much, I don't know if you remember, but we put so much crushed stone underneath those freezer trailers that that's just our like foundation now. So.
Okay. So the only other questions that I have, is this gonna be like the same thing where he pays for the legal and does, is his taxes up to?
His taxes are current.
Okay, good job.
Yes.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, we don't mind paying the legal to add the words, so.
Okay.
Do we need, do we need a motion?
Yes.
To do that, okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to?
Add to?
Yeah, basically to add to the ACH manufacturing on Royal Sun Farms.
And manufacturing.
And manufacturing onto Royal Sun Farms ACH. Was that better, Lee?
No, it's H.C.A.
No? H.C.A. Let me, kind, let me just stop over. Hold on.
Well, should we direct it to the legal people in the motion? That Carolyn in fact added to the?
Okay, so I would like to make a new motion. That we send to legal, um, the ACH.
No.
What?
H.C.A.
H.C.A.
H.C.A. Can you tell him dyslexic at all, anybody? No, okay. H.C.A. of Royal Sun Farms to add manufacturing. Is that better?
And manufacturing.
What, and?
Yeah.
Well, to add ma, add.
And manufacturing, right? Those words, okay?
Yep.
Okay, motion made?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? Okay. All, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Damon.
Thank you.
But I know you have another meeting to go to.
Thank you, I didn't get a fly.
Thanks.
So long trip, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll call a joint meeting with the school committee. So if the school committee people come up and open your own meeting and then we'll?
I don't think we need to.
Okay, alright.
So it's, it's only Hubbardson members, it's not a whole committee?
Twenty percent of the board.
Oh.
Debbie or Mark, you wanna lead off?
Go ahead, Mark.
First of all, everybody should have had a little more on each of these particular candidates. Now, the way I, I think I mentioned it last time, it looks, it looks like we have, you know, a couple candidates with, you know, some education background. Then a couple parents who are also interested in becoming involved. At this particular point, we only have one position. And this position is gonna be for probably the next, what, seven or eight months? And then whoever gets into that position will have to, you know, run for the office and other people, some of the other folks may run against them. You know, at this particular point in time. So I'd be interested in, you know, knowing what people think about the candidates per se, I guess. I mean, there's one that's clearly has a lot of experience.
Anyone from the board like to jump in first?
Sure.
Peter?
I, I feel, I, I did look at them and it is one very qualified. I think you speak about the woman that just retired?
Yes.
Okay. I, I personally would rather see somebody in that position that actually has a child in the school. That's my personal feeling about that, because I think, yeah, not that the, I mean, she had a ton of experience and I applaud her for what she's done in her career. I mean, that's amazing. But I feel somebody with a child in the system has a different take on what's going on and what they're looking for. Rather than if somebody has been in the administration a long time, even though she's very, very qualified. That's just my personal feeling on that. I'd rather see somebody from the other side. So her, their point of view can be brought to the board or committee.
Email where she's basically here.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Just, just, just a little something to add.
Constellium too.
Yeah. You gotta have a cohesive group as far as I'm concerned for things to work properly.
Well, my two cents? So my two cents, although like I said, that, that one is extremely, yeah, has a resume very nice. But right in there, she says she's not willing, she's not interested necessarily in running. So there's another one that is a teacher and has kids in the school that I'm more leaning towards because I think that one might wanna stick with it. Because like what Peter's saying, he, he's got kids in the system, so he probably wants to see good things happen. And he is a school teacher, so at least there's that. There, there's a background there.
Talking about Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how anybody else feels about that one.
I'm very impressed by his and again, he does criteria you're mentioning, having children in the school system. So I was impressed by him.
I will tell you that Heather had sent an email and her email said that she was leaning toward Dixie, which I believe is the one with?
The other one.
Yeah.
The experience. That was her two cents.
That's fine. Debbie?
Um. I thought about this a lot with Dixie not wanting to run. And I think for this short timeframe, I think she would be the best choice for our committee. Because the committee takes years to learn. It's very complex to learn the budget and all the inner workings. It really takes probably about five years till you kind of feel you have your feet under you. And this position is only until the next election. So I feel Dixie may be a good choice, but I would absolutely want to encourage the others to attend meetings and get involved in our meetings now. And then be ready in the spring and pull papers. So my feeling for this short-term interim position, I think Dixie would be the best fit because I think she could add the most value hitting the ground running right now.
More so than Ms. McDonald?
Um. I think, you know, I think whether it be a parent, you know, I, I don't have, I worked at Watchus and School District, so I don't have, for only two years. So I don't have a lot of education background. I do think we do need a good mix and we do have a good, we have a fifteen-member board. So it's, it's a lot of different backgrounds.
Yes, right, diverse.
Yeah, and Joanne's our teacher right now on the board too. So I think a T, you know, I think anyone, you know, anyone that's willing to come and listen and learn can do the job. But I just think because this is such a short period of time and it's, you know, we've already lost several months with this person now. I just think she would be a good choice and, you know, maybe she'll be interested, maybe not. But I think, you know, everybody could pull papers in the spring and run for the position.
If I might ask, are you all in agreement with this? Is this, are you basically leaning?
I'm sorry. My first inclination was to go with Dixie because of her vast experience as a teacher. But then listening to what Mr. Walker had said, I think you're getting a complete package deal if you go with somebody who's a teacher and has a child in the system. I mean, just, and especially if Dixie is not looking to be in it for the long run. I mean, that's the other thing that gives me pause with her.
Right. And, and, may I speak, Chair?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so if you do go with that other person, instead of throwing those seven months, well, not you're throwing it away, you're getting a whole bunch of knowledge for that seven months. But I think with a person without that knowledge, that gives them seven months of more knowledge than they would have had. As, as waiting for the vote.
Yeah.
You know, get them in, OJT them as you need to, at least they get seven months OJT prior to pulling papers. That's, you know, my thought on it.
Yeah, and I did that too, because I was appointed this year, were appointed me. So I came in and had very little time till I had to pull papers again, so.
Right.
But you do, you learn a lot in a very short amount of time.
And it's an overwhelming amount of information you need to learn.
Yes, it is.
I applaud all of you for what you do.
Chris, you have anything?
Um, I, I like, I like Mr. McDonald as a candidate. He's got the experience, he's got a skin in the game, right? And you can say, come to the meetings, you're welcome to come to our meetings and learn. But if you don't really have membership in that group, I think it's gonna be highly unlikely that that person doesn't show. If he's actually on the select board, if that person is actually on the select board, I think they'll be more likely to come to the meetings and participate and learn the ins and outs of the whole, the whole system.
If I might add, Debbie and to the rest of you, because I also feel strongly about Mr. McDonald based on a couple of things. When Ms. Estee sent us an email, she said, "I probably would not be interested in running for the position next spring." I responded to the original email somewhat as a good Samaritan in case there was no one interested. And as you said, it is for a seven-month period. It's a learning process. My point being, this gentleman might be interested in lasting longer than seven months. And if you T, if you have a learning process and you spend the time learning it, if she did, then we'd have to start all over again with another learning process. So my feeling would be for that reason, I also would support Mr. McDonald. That's how I'm feeling.
Can I just?
Absolutely. Is there a joint meeting with?
Yes, I, I can, I can live, I can live with that, that's fine.
Me too.
But, but what I would like to do, right, so we don't have to meet like a number of other times, I would like to maybe have a backup just in case. Because we've got a history of folks like at the last minute deciding that, yeah, well, you know, I thought I wanted to do this, but I got something else going on. You know, it, it's just, it's fine. I understand how people have other commitments. But if, if we had Mr. McDonald and maybe, you know, we can agree on maybe Dixie is a second choice. If Mr. McDonald didn't work out and, I don't know, how, how do people feel about that?
I, everybody look at me, I'm not.
Well, it's somebody else.
Well, I am opinionated. I'm fine with having a backup and I do understand your point, you know, because people do bail at the last second. They, you know, had good intentions and then things do come up. So I'm fine with like an alternate, just in case, you know? And if she's willing to serve, but yes, I do feel like if we put her, I just, I would rather see Robert be first because I don't, he's willing to stay, I feel. From the way he wrote things. And that's what we wanna encourage, somebody that's gonna stick with you guys and learn and work and go. Because the starting over point. And there's no guarantees that they'll be like, eh, I don't feel like doing that. You already crapped on me once. You know? So I, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna turn people away that actually want to do the long haul.
Can, can you really what that?
Sure, yeah.
No, I was fine. He was my second.
Okay.
So and is one, is another, is a woman with a child in the school system, right? She's non-teacher, correct?
Right.
So that's totally outside.
I mean, I don't know what the town normally does, but you know, we would absolutely encourage these people to get involved and stay, you know?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, they, they've got some very good backgrounds, et cetera, all of them.
Yeah, I mean, it's great to see such a responsive.
God knows many people who wanna help out, you know?
Also, lots of other spots and other committees open, feel free.
That's what I was going to say.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is if these people are not chosen, we can reach out to them and say, you know, that position has been filled. However, we have openings on other committees. Would you be interested in serving there? So we can do that.
Okay.
Mike, Mike Stahl, five Lombard Road. I'd like to offer maybe a little different view and that's that I've heard about the qualifications for this quote-unquote position. Well, it's not a position on the committee for a school administrator. It's not a position on the committee for a teacher. It's a school board committee. And I agree with Mr. Walker and Ms. Young regarding having some other diversity in this. And that we, we, I heard someone say that it's already diverse, but it sounds like it's pretty well loaded with school people. And they'll be speaking in an echo chamber, basically, all school people talking with school people. And it may not bring in other ideas or issues or perspectives. So I just offer that I don't think the school committee should be overloaded with school people. And that although I think some of those skills that they have as both administrators or teachers are beneficial, that's, it's gotta be balanced. And so other perspectives, I think, would be a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Totally agree. I'm not a school person per se.
Thank you. Thank you. Good.
I ain't come through the school system, but you know, I've been on the committee for a number of years and somehow it worked out. And people respect my perspective as well as the respective of, of the, of the folks that have similar backgrounds there.
I agree that just because I went to school doesn't make me quote-unquote qualified to be a teacher or an administrator. So I, I do see both sides of the issue.
Alright, so?
Anything else? Any further discussion? If not?
I was gonna make a motion.
But I, I have a point I want to make.
Sorry.
Going back to your backup, okay? Because when we decide, it has to be in the form of a motion for one person. I don't think we could put in the motion a backup. In that sense, besides which, has she even asked if, and asked if she would be a backup? So point making, should we go with the consensus right now? Would you be willing to check with her to see if in fact she would be willing to do that?
Well, I don't know, I, I don't think we implement the backup strategy until Mr. McDonald said that he had liked the position. I'm hoping you missed that.
Well, no, only because you're mentioning that her, in this position, in an open meeting. So she's probably, might, she may not want anything to do with that when you finally present it to her, because?
Well, I mean, there are four candidates and, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with, you know, two that, a, a couple that would actually be acceptable. And, you know, every one of the folks has, has a great background, somebody's good background, somebody mentioned, but you know?
We can keep these on, we can keep these on file.
I mean, we've, we've had down the numbers since June.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like, we'd like?
We really would like to get this filled, without even having to come to your meeting.
Well, I'm not suggesting we're not gonna fill it.
That's, I think Mark was trying to, if, if this appointment doesn't work out tonight, could we have another plan so that we don't have to wait another couple, couple of weeks to come back to another meeting to?
Well, at the very least, you know, we'll keep these all on file so that, because they've expressed their interest once made. And who sees what happens? So let's see what happens when the elections come out.
I don't think we should put a backup situation in the, in the motion.
No, I'm not saying, I don't think we can.
We're looking for one person. I think we decided on that person. If this person doesn't pan out, unfortunately, I think we gotta start the process over. It might be a little more streamlined because we know we've got people who do have an interest in it, but I think we gotta stick to the one person for the one opening.
Okay, that being, that being the case, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert McDonald to the school committee for the remaining year to June, was it thirtieth?
Till, till the election, town election.
Till the elections, till town election. Twenty, twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any more, any further discussion from either board or the committee? Okay, can we take a voice? Just all in favor, say?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Opposed? No. One, one opposition, abstentions? Motion's passed. We'll notify Mr. McDonald, but he's now the, our member.
Point, point of clarification?
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously we'd like to fast access. It, Tony will call this person tomorrow and perhaps get them in to?
When is your next meeting?
Um, it's probably gonna be a week from Thursday, right?
Yes.
Right, I haven't gotten the agenda, but probably a week from Thursday, so.
Is that the full school, full school thing in Quavon?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'd like, yeah. So if, if Tony could contact a person and we, once To, Tony could notify either Deb or I relative to the fact that, you know, they've accepted and they're being, gonna be sworn in, et cetera, et cetera. And then we have to notify the administration at Quavon and then they start sending, you know, information to them, meeting information, you know, handbooks, or, or whatever is the normal process at this particular point in time. That would, that would be something.
Okay, yes.
Will he be able to be sworn in?
Yes, if we can get him here, um, tomorrow or Wednesday, we can get him sworn in this week. Otherwise, we'll work, we can, we'll figure something out for next week, but we can get him sworn in.
Mr. Who would swear him in, in?
Yeah. So hopefully, yeah, as long as he can get here while Lori's here.
Yeah.
And then he can be sworn in where he's a teacher.
I know.
That might be rough. Well, they'll just have to like drop him down.
Where is he a teacher?
I think, no.
Not, yeah, I know, but he's still have to get here.
Okay.
No, I mean, he could be sworn in next week.
Yeah, but the, okay, so Monday's a holiday and that's the day that they're open late. So it's not open late next week.
Oh, yeah, that could be.
And your meeting is when?
Next Thursday, till week.
Yeah.
A week from Thursday, okay. Eleven, the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully before Thursday.
I'm sure Sandy can make the contact and make all the arrangements to get him there, get him this morning.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that. Okay, alright.
Great.
Nothing else to bring before us? Like a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the school committee?
I'll make a motion to adjouring, adjourn the joint meeting with the school committee.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's, let's remove the, yes.
Let me get my school stuff.
Aye.
Like to, at this point, open up the joint meeting with the finance committee, so if you folks wanna come forward. And Susan, I guess you?
Yep, we'll call the meeting to order, ooh, seven o'clock.
It's the little things.
You're so fancy.
It's the little things, I'm telling you.
I know. Alright, why don't we click on this one, all the highlights?
That's not the free cash one, is it?
No, that's.
No, that's not the free cash.
Okay.
This is just the whole budget.
It's not in our packet, right?
Nope.
No, that's why I put it up here.
All yours, Sandy and Susan.
Okay. So in your packet, I did put the um, you had asked about the uh the free cash and where that money came from. And so I gave you a breakdown, although you guys didn't get it, did you? Okay, yeah, but they did not receive it.
We, we don't have it.
I'm sorry, so.
That's alright.
Alright, so off the top, what I, I, let me see if I can get this.
We still have to use your.
I know, but I can't get that up on Zoom with.
No.
Can you print it up now?
But they. I, she's not attached to a printer.
I'm not attached to a printer.
But I can get it off of mine, how's that?
Okay.
Um.
You good, or?
Yes, I am, cause I know where it is in mine.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Believe it or not.
Very.
Think I know where it is, but that could change. It's behind the talking thing here.
Behind the talking thing?
The Zoom meeting talking.
The Zoom meeting talking thing?
The free cash breakdown, here we go. So I will print some more of these off, just easier. Oh, cause I'm not connected either, cause I'm not plugged in. Okay, let's see if I can share my screen and get this on here.
That sounds like fun.
Not really.
Well, could I just make a suggestion?
It's going so well.
Tech savvy, I am not.
Let me make a suggestion, if it's not too much of a problem for you to get hooked up and do that, we could move on. Some of these items, just take, fire a vote, get them out of the way.
Okay. Actually, you know what I wanted to start with um in this budget discussion was? You all have a copy of the town meeting warrant um that I kinda prepared.
Mm-hmm.
There are two extra, um, there will be two other motions on there. I'll put that up for you guys, either did I, um.
There's Article Two.
Article Two and Article Three. There are, is a um, if we could work on those first because those are bills from, one of them is a bill from FY twenty-two. It is the DPW's bill from Palmer Paving Corporation. It's for a hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. They did not anticipate the bill and it was, the actual invoice was dated August twelfth for some supplies that were ordered on June twenty-ninth. Um, and as I said, that's a hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. We need to figure out where you would take that from to pay for that hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. And I will print some of these off.
Okay.
Okay, um.
That's the first one.
Okay. Authorized payment, always, always.
So we, we need to figure out where that's coming from, is that intent?
Yes. Yeah.
We're gonna get the hundred and seven dollars and forty cents?
Yeah, I know, who's got money in their pockets?
Shake me upside down, see what comes out.
Yes, quick, everyone go check their car seats.
Well, is that the, the nature of it, appropriate for a reserve fund transfer?
And then there's number three, two minutes, that answers in a second. Plus, I mean, it's a hu- it's only a hundred and seven dollars, so can we take it from free cash? I mean, it's literally a hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. It's not like a hundred grand. Sandy, we can take that from free cash, right?
I believe so.
You believe so?
I believe it's either free cash or reserve fund at this point, so.
Okay.
That was Susan's question, so we could do either.
Yeah.
I don't like taking from free cash.
Well, how much is in the reserve fund? I don't, I don't really, it's a hundred and seven dollars, whichever way is, is best suited for legality.
Yeah, the article three is, wants the sum of twenty thousand from free cash.
That's a whole, that's a whole different kettle of fish. That's a little bit more.
I don't think it comes from the reserve fund because that was, they're saying it was, it's supposed to be fiscal year twenty-two. So the reserve fund is twenty-three right now.
Yeah, that's mine. I let, I, I let her start looking at it, so.
I was trying to print out more.
That's fine, I'll pick mine back, thank you.
There is one for you.
I was letting them start to cheat sheet off it, so that Lori could, could just party down there.
Thank you, Sandy, for your, uh.
Yeah, another thing did not print right, but let me try again.
So what is it they're looking at?
The same thing.
The warrant, that's actually the warrant.
Oh, this?
Yeah, of what you got.
Yeah.
So.
Excuse me.
If we can't take it from the reserves because it's a different, if it's for this year than, and not last year, then the only other option is free cash.
Well, this is for a prior fiscal year invoice, so would this was work that was already done, correct?
Yeah.
And it would have already been budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
And whose account would this have been, DPW?
Yeah.
And shouldn't it come from their account?
Agreed.
Well, shut up.
Well, I mean, d- does he have any reserves?
I mean, if you order something on the twenty-eighth of a month, you're not gonna get an invoice in two days.
So, yeah. Usually not, no.
I mean, could it come from DPW? It's, it's basically their outstanding bill, right? That would, that would be my question and suggestion.
I'll just yell it. She's tried to do enough. I don't wanna distract her.
So.
I brought the question up in the sense, this was uh from another year. Work has been done, this would have been DPW, could we take it from them? Do they have a hundred and seven dollars and forty cents someplace?
They do, but we cannot take it from the fiscal twenty-three budget because it's a prior year um bill.
So what are the options, where can we take it from?
What's available?
Free cash or reserve fund?
Free cash or the reserve fund?
What are the balances in those accounts, do we know? What's available?
Well, we're talking free cash, how much is in our reserve, or is it in our reserve account?
Free cash? Well, right now thirty-five thousand, but there's nine thousand that's going to the well up at the um.
Rec field.
Rec field. And the other thing is, one of the things we were talking about tonight is possibly um cutting five thousand dollars out of the reserve fund because that was an increase over last year since we are going to be slashing budgets today.
We are, and I have, spoiler alert, I have a proposed um budget that I'll share with all of you when we, we get around to discuss that. But it's a hundred and seven dollars, so I think it should come out of the, out of the reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about a hundred and seven bucks here. How much is in the reserve fund?
What do you think?
Thirty-five thousand? How much in free cash we got?
That's, that's two options.
Eight hundred and thirty-eight.
It should come out, it should come from us first.
Take it out of the reserve fund.
Out of the reserve.
From FinCom reserve.
Okay, alright, then I will put that on the warrant.
Do you need any action on that, other than disagreeing? I know there was, do we need a motion?
I don't, I don't know, it's not gonna hurt, how's that?
Let's just, let's just make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to take the proposed Article Two, a hundred and seven dollars and forty-sevenths for Palmer Paving Corp for um something that happened in June, out of the reserve fund.
FinCom reserve fund.
FinCom reserve fund, thank you.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. So now we're on Article Three.
Yes. Um, Article Three is um to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of twenty thousand dollars to pay for the engineering corp for phase, the construction phase services for the town center project. Uh, this was something that was presented to the ARPA committee and based on the ARPA committee's recommendations, they did not um put this in their um recommendations to the select board and it is an invoice that we're going to need to pay. They oversee the, the project, all the construction phases of it. They make sure um everything is on track and they work with all the um not only the um company that was awarded the contract, um but they also work with National Grid and Verizon um to get those poles moved and the wires maintained, all that done as well. They see the project from start to finish as far as all the repaving and making sure everything is all done correctly.
Nice, so, yeah, so free cash it is?
That is, that's what I was.
Is there, do you have a reason why the ARPA people denied this for federal money?
Get rid of my mind.
Chris, my, since he was on the ARPA committee, he might.
Um, it, it had to do with the fact that uh this was a town-approved project that was uh budgeted for, from the budget, um, you know, budgeted item. Why, why isn't this included in the total budget of, of the project? I think we had the question of where this, where this invoice came from, why it came. And if it's a town-sponsored budget, which we're paying through the, through the budget, why wasn't this part of that? Why wasn't it incorporated in that total nut?
The other, the other reason is that there wasn't enough money to go around. And so that was one of the things that the ARPA committee decided it would not fund, in favor of funding other things.
Cause the bulk of the project is a grant.
But it was eligible for ARPA money.
Yeah.
It was.
It could have been.
If, if, if we, if we had enough money, I think we probably would have spread it around. But we didn't, and so we made some other harder, other hard decisions, including refusing some other requests.
I mean, I mean, the bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, but I, why'd you ask the question? Cause I was going to, is that, I think we need to do this, number one, because it's a fait accompli, the project is already in.
Oh, they do, oh, yeah, definitely.
We need so- someone to oversee this uh project, you know.
Definitely.
I mean, I questioned.
I used to like taking all this money from free cash all the time.
Well, I thi- I think we should take some of the mo- what if we took some of the money from FinCom? From the reserve, not all, not all of it, but some of it.
From the reserve.
Like fifty-fifty split?
Yeah.
Thank you for.
What do we think?
So we get thirty thousand after we cut our budget. Nine's already spent, that leaves us with twenty-one left for the year and we're gonna give ten more for this. Leaving us eleven for the year, just thinking ahead.
Well, we, that's right. Well, apparently, we can always, we can always dip into free cash, but I think that should.
I just wanna understand. And do I, do I understand that right?
You do.
Okay.
But I think the trust should be a laugh, I agree.
It's early in the game, that's all.
Yes, it is, and that's my recommendation would be to take it from free cash um because it is a one-time expense that um, you know, we won't, this will be it. The town center project will be done, um, you know, that is just um how it was recommended to me from um our former town administrator was to take it from the free cash as well. But, you know, due to the fact that it is a one-time cost and that's what free cash is to be used for, those kind of free things.
Oh, I, I don't argue the point. To, to be totally transparent, you know, as far as where I'm coming from now as the chairman and so forth and everything that's happened and is in the future, I'm really getting really stingy about spending free cash knowing that next year is gonna be worse than this year. And the one thing Ryan always told us was, as much as possible, don't be bailing yourselves out with free cash.
That's right.
And we're in for a tough year next year. So that's where I'm coming from every time I'm saying, I don't like the idea of us spending free cash because I just keep saying, my god, we got next year. So that's where I'm coming from, so.
Is this an oversight?
No.
No.
So this isn't known prior, on the prior budget, when this whole construction job was put together for the town center?
I believe.
They knew they were gonna have to pay, pay this engineering corp, which sounds like a construction manager, I mean.
Yes.
Twenty thousand. So why are we paying for it now if it was all prior approved?
I believe that because it was submitted to ARPA, they.
Left it off.
They didn't put it in the budget.
This was Ryan submitted it to ARPA, it was Ryan himself who submitted it.
Was it Ri-? Well, was it Ryan or was it David?
When, when I read, when I saw all the ARPA stuff, it was Ryan's.
I'm not sure. Okay.
He, he put in two, one was for an ambulance and one was for this.
Okay, alright, um.
Okay.
And this wouldn't be eligible for one, the, the grant?
Not this part of it, no. Um, the grant was for the actual work, not the oversight of it.
Which is still a great deal.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
About five grand from.
That's what I'm like.
What are we, what are we talking about here, right?
I'm not sure why we, why, what's, it's all coming out of the town one way.
Right, exactly.
Eventually, eventually.
At the end of the day, it's all coming out of the town. If you guys go bankrupt over there, you're gonna come to free cash and we're gonna approve it anyways, right? So I like.
So there you go, a lot bigger bucket than we have, so I'd rather keep our bucket full as we can, I just, I don't, I don't care.
Be done at town meeting.
Right.
So.
If they run out of money, they can't come to free cash unless we have a town meeting, so.
If they run out of money, then we have to have another town meeting. And that's a cost as well.
So let's do free cash.
It is, and it's time everybody figured out that that's the way this is now. Is my thinking on the, on the subject. And uh the piper has come to be paid and now we're paying. And I think that if we run out of money, then we ran out of money.
I'm, I'm just saying.
There will be more, you'll, you'll get to see more.
No, the only thing I'm, I'm saying is that as far as, you know, mailing the warrant, legal counsel for a town meeting, um, you know, all those expenses, you're talking at least, at least a thousand dollars per town meeting um, you know, to go back to another town meeting. And that doesn't.
Yeah.
Include election workers coming in and checking people in and, and things like that as well.
Well, you're staring that, you're staring that in the face for any, any unexpected expense that exceeds whatever FinCom has. You always have that risk.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's just a question of, of whether we feel lucky.
With these old buildings?
I'm not feeling it.
No, I don't, I don't wanna play that game, I know how this works.
Well, but then, but, but if that's the case, then you're staring at, you're gonna be staring at one in the face anyway.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to put in our motion, we can still discuss that after a motion and if it's been seconded, are we still trying to kick, kick it around?
I'll make a motion that we take ten thousand dollars from FinCom and additional ten thousand dollars from fee, free cash and pay this bill to um, to the engineering corp for construction phase services.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And second, discussion, cause I know there's mixed feelings here too.
I've said my, I've said my point.
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of twenty thousand from free cash.
Okay.
And leave the FinCom Reserve Fund intact for the time being. But.
Any other discussion, anybody? Just a minute, Mike.
Sure.
From the board, any discussion?
Susan?
Alright, Mike? Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road, does anyone know how many hours is in that twenty K? And we are, that's to be used for oversight of the construction contractor. Who oversees this engineering management company or construction management company?
Who, what?
Who do they answer to?
The state?
Yeah, basically, the state. Oh, the state.
State engineers.
Okay, thank you.
The state, yeah.
This is a state grant that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Alright, I'll call the question then, uh, for the vote on the motion, again, the motion was, correct me, Chris, if I'm wrong, to take ten thousand from the finance.
Reserve.
Fund, okay? And ten thousand from free cash to pay the engineering corporation for construction phase of the downtown project, is that correct?
That is my motion.
Alright, and was seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Abstentions, okay, the motion is carried, okay.
That was a fun move in. Just hope nothing blows up.
Anything else before we take the vote on the warrant?
No.
Okay.
That's, unless anybody has anything to add to the warrant?
Well, I think we do.
Okay.
I think we have the whole budget to do.
Oh, alright, are we doing the budget part yet then?
Yeah, we're gonna do that next, yep.
Okay.
So do you wanna hold off on the vote then, on the, the warrant?
Yes, yeah, close the warrant, yes.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I think um, um, in our last, in our last meeting, we talked about possibly doing three options. One where the, the budget hole was filled entirely with free cash. One where it was a fifty fifty split, where fifty percent came from free cash and fifty percent came from other cuts.
Mm-hmm.
And then an option where the budget was not, uh, the budget hole was not filled with free cash and was uh, and was managed with cuts. Here are my thoughts on the subject.
Yeah.
Please, one for me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
There we go, everybody get one, yes. That's right, get your glasses out, this bad boy.
Increase your font size on your front page.
Then it, then it's multiple pages.
Oh, really?
I'm not made of money.
Rather than that.
Spit it.
That's like a magnifying glass on your phone.
No, I, I looked and it was worse, in the, in the portrait, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Okay. So get your glasses out, um, but you can, you can see the summary here. Um, with the exception of the select board's executive assistant, which was originally budgeted at a forty-three percent increase, no salaries or positions have been cut. That's the first, that's the first observation I'll make in this, in this proposal. Um, the new town administrator would have a slightly lower salary and a higher merit increase based on substantive criteria developed by the select board. That's my next observation. Operating budget cuts are lar- are largely to supplies accounts, legal and FinCom. Building commissioner, we had that savings because the individual hired was on a part-time basis. And capital budget cuts, which are included in here, are deferrals, we all know. And all cuts are one-time savings, no free cash is used. I would also add that the budget deficit that I was working with was the hundred and eighty-three, two hundred and eighty dollars. No, no um, manipulation of revenue amounts. We go with the revenue amounts we originally forecast as good and true.
Okay.
So, this is a hundred and eighty-three doll- a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in change worth of cuts. And that's what this would look like.
There's snow and ice.
What I've given you are the, the line items from the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the account and the name, and the, and the line item and the description. So these are the, those line item category number things in the description. Ten twenty-six proposed, that's, that's my number that I propose be used. The next column is uh, what was approved at the June town meeting. The next column is what I cut, the percentage that I cut. And then the savings column is, is then to the right.
The snow and ice, that we still made it, cause um, at our last meeting, it said that we couldn't go under.
There wasn't. We didn't, there were, there were increases in those line items, and so I backed it out.
Okay. Okay, alright. Okay.
It's, I think it's twelve hundred bucks.
Okay, so it's still above, so we're fine there?
Or eighteen fifty, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's right.
Okay, um, some of the things I could put in the select board packet to start off with, um, some of these things have already, some of these items have already been spent.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the senior center, they've already used their um, fifty-two hundred account.
On what?
It's a services account, and I believe they've spent all but a couple hundred of it, I would have to pull up the document, but um, that I'm not sure of, um, ju- and that's just looking at this quick, um.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's okay.
How do you cut streetlights?
Turn them off.
Oh, oh, don't you remember, we still pay for them.
I don't know anything about that.
I remember that from years ago, yes, you still pay for them even though they're off.
Is that right, is that right? Then why did the, then why does the number go up?
Uh, well, you pay, if, you still have to pay for them even though they're off, but that, you can ask Travis, it was, I remember that, when Pat was
Really?
Still on here, and so wasn't um, uh, Jamie Haddad, and it was the old, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because I questioned how much we were paying per streetlight, cause I have one on my driveway, and I'm like, I don't pay that much for mine. And then they were still paying for them to be off, so Travis had them moved, turned on and moved to specific intersections so that way, if we're gonna pay for them, we might as well use them and actually use them efficiently and have them switched to LED. So, we were paying for them, but now we're actually paying for them to be used properly and LED, so, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Okay, well, as I say, these are my suggestions, and that's the point of this is to get this kind of information. And that just communicates that we need to find three thousand dollars from somebody else.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. And to cut the executive's assistance budget.
Mm-hmm.
She's gonna go look for another job.
I understand.
Um, we've got enough problems trying to fill bud- fill positions right now.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, Heather, Heather, I gave Heather a sneak preview of this.
Yeah.
Because, because.
Okay, that's what her comments were about then.
Yeah, and, that's right, and so she objected to that as well, and, I'm sorry, but I'd have to look at my email, cause I don't.
I had no clue. Yeah.
Perhaps, did she copy you on that?
No, but she sent me an email tonight that just said.
Okay, then perhaps she, perhaps she forwarded those along.
We were confused, what was about this?
I was totally confused what that meant.
Yeah.
I see, yeah.
Cause I said, this isn't on the agenda, whatever she's talking about, but uh.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
That's alright, that's what it's about.
Okay, that might make more sense now.
Okay.
Um, I'd leave the executive assistants' wages alone, she's currently handling a great deal of the work in one of the few remaining bodies.
Mm-hmm, yep, I understand.
Um, she'd leave the wages for the TA alone, and the expenses line is that person will most likely need various training. Um, including uh, training for pro- procurement, um.
You're talking about the twenty-six twenty-five number?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, um, we can completely reduce the incentive line for the TA, as that shouldn't come into play at all this year.
Okay.
Um, she said, um, as far as legal goes, and I'm gonna have to agree with her on this one, she had asked Tony for a year-to-date um, report, I can tell you last month's legal bill alone was nine thousand dollars.
Why?
Right.
We've got two lawsuits going. That's, that's all I can say in open session.
Oh, well, alright, okay, alright.
Um, so, if anything, we'll be looking for more money for our legal budget.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so I did talk to Travis today about the DPW, um, if, if you cut the forty thousand dollars out of his supplies account, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. Um, I was looking at maybe seven or eight out of his budget.
Okay.
Um, and not touching snow and ice at all, I mean, last year they ran a deficit in snow and ice as it was, and they had to come and ask for more. Um, the library budget I didn't touch, cause I knew that there was a percentage that we had to keep in there, um. I talked to Santa about recreation. She did say where the basketball court was a capital budget item, she thought that was going to come in under the eight thousand dollars, so we could probably save two grand there, but not cut the entire amount. Um, the um, the cut to unemployment, we can cut fifteen hundred dollars, that's not gonna be a huge issue.
Mm-hmm.
That I, I'd be okay with, um, I know.
Fifteen hundred or fifteen?
Fifteen hundred, the whole budget's only fifteen thousand.
Fifteen hundred.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
Um, I have about six hundred dollars so far this year paid to unemployment, um, pending, nobody.
Mm-hmm.
Thing is, the laws with unemployment have changed.
Mm-hmm.
So you can now, if I left the town tomorrow, went and got a job somewhere else, and six months down the road, they laid me off, I can come back to my former employer for unemployment as well.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And we have had that in some situations, so, that's a very scary.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Scary place to be.
Yep.
Um.
That's just okay.
Uh-huh. I did talk to the accountant and, you know, told her we were gonna, we were talking about cutting her travel. She was okay with that, not thrilled, but okay. Um, as far as.
That's why there was nothing included on, on that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as like the expenses for the treasurer collector, the town clerk, I have to tell you, the increases that were put in this year were because postage was going up. And so with postage going up as it is now, I have ordered the cheapest envelopes I can find to send out my bills. I have senior workers that come in and stamp my return address on them, because that's cheaper using a stamp than it is to have them pre-printed. And the same way with stamps, we buy the stamps, the senior workers stamp all my envelopes. It's cheaper than getting a postage meter and paying the maintenance on a postage meter. It is um, cheaper than buying pre-postaged envelopes through the postal service. So, I kinda feel like we're doing it the cheapest way we possibly can now, so to cut any more, I'm not even sure I'd have money to buy the envelopes and the postage and the forms to print the tax bills on, cause we're printing those in-house, I print all my own tax bills. The town clerk is already printing her own census forms, she stopped sending that out last year um, to a company, and she printed those all and stuffed all her stuff in-house, so we are not paying any services for any of those things now. We're doing it all ourselves with what we've got, and thankfully, we have a lot of senior workers. Um, yeah, anybody else wanna comment?
Where will you, where would you make up the difference on this, on this assumption? Where would it come from?
I honestly don't think it's physically possible to take a hundred and eighty-three thousand out of our budget.
Oh, it is, just nobody's gonna like it.
Nobody, not only that, we're not gonna have any employees.
Yeah, I.
And we're not gonna have anything to work with.
Can't touch the employees, we're in trouble now as it is, so.
Um, right.
We have to run this town with staff. Play with their numbers, see, they're gonna go bye-bye, there's plenty of jobs elsewhere.
I have to tell you, the budget cuts that I've made come up to about seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars, something like that. I'll show you in a minute. Um, and those hurt, those are already hurt and we're still a fat cry from a hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where's the rest of it's com- coming from?
Yep.
Is there any appetite? Um, I think I remember Peter at the last meeting, uh, you mentioned uh, what the capital expenses looked like, and you didn't remember.
Right.
I didn't remember.
Yeah.
So I looked them up.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, it appeared to me that these, these two line items probably had not been spent or would not have been spent all at once, because a number of the other items were purchases.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm thinking that ship has, that ship has sailed.
A lot of those. Yes, a lot of those items have been ordered.
But, but these wouldn't, but these would not have.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what I focused on.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that is, i- if, if there are going to be fur- if there were to be further cuts, that's where, then in my opinion, that's where it would have to come from.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you, you have to, if we can't afford a vehicle.
Well, there apparently isn't anything else.
Yeah, if we can't afford to replace a vehicle li- next year, oh well, we can't afford it right now. We have to take care of the school issue, and then we can worry about all the other stuff.
Well, I, I also, but I was also trying to, it's, it's, as we all appreciate, it's a tough balance, because I was not going to take anything from public safety.
Yeah.
Which leaves deep, leaves poor little DPW all alone by the telephone with me.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that uh, that get it in, get it in the neck from me every time.
Yeah, but they've been pretty good for the last three or four years, for equipment.
The fire department, when I talked to the fire chief, um, and all these people said they would have been here tonight, I told them I just didn't feel it would have been necessary, um, but when I talked to the fire chief, I do have his notes in here somewhere. He had said that, we had talked about the three thousand dollar cut in cough wages.
Supplies. Oh.
Um,
Yes.
For Sunday coverage. What he told me about that was that the people who are doing the Sunday coverage now are earning less than the people who used to do the Sunday coverage. So that's where the three thousand dollar in savings is coming from, it's not, we're not gonna have anybody at the station that day.
It's lower wages?
It's lower wages, yes.
Okay.
Um, so he said that is doable. When I talked to Ryan about cutting any wages at all, what he said was if you cut wages this year, then to get them back next year, you have to use free cash, because we can only go up the two and a half percent.
Right.
Right.
So it's either we use free cash now, or we're gonna use it next year. Um, and basically, they're gonna offset each other.
Wha- what did the chief say about the supplies?
The supplies, I asked him about the supplies, and he did say, um, there were a couple of, there's like two things in the ambulance for supplies, and he said one of them has been on the books for years, he believes it came from the old Hawaldon Hospital. Um, when we get our portion of money from them every year, and it's just kinda been rolling over and it hasn't been spent. So, to take two thousand out of his current supplies, he would just use up that other account, and it wouldn't, that would not be a, a big hit to him for this year. Ryan, do you wanna say anything about your police budget? Cause she's looking to cut your supplies. Looking at this right, almost four thousand dollars. Um, we've.
So, I think this, for this year, I think the best case scenario is to take it out of wages, because we have. The open sergeant's position, that's not being backfilled.
Right.
So, there's enough savings there that I can absorb it this year. I know next year we'll have to still find that money, so I can look at other things next year, but this year I would really take it out of wages, and then. We can talk about supplies or whatever, cause I have all my supplies broken down.
Okay.
By like line item, like some things like ammunition.
Yep.
There's probably like four thousand dollars in ammunition.
Mm-hmm.
We can't cut that, because we have to shoot a certain amount for the new post standards and all that stuff.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
So that, I would, I could find it elsewhere next year, but I would just, like I said, I think wages is the best, the best spot this year.
Okay.
And the wages you're talking about is the open position?
It's the open position, that would eventually.
Right.
That's the people who are listening.
Right.
Right, right.
So, uh, it's just.
The thing is, we'd have to find that money for next year, which is gonna be.
Well, I, and like I said, I can go through other, other line items and and find that money, which I already had broken down.
Okay. Yes.
Cause Ryan was like, I'll come up with some cuts, and then I had several different ones for him, and then.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I was like, well, it just makes sense to take it out of wages this year, so.
Okay. This isn't a fun conversation.
So where are we now?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
All over the place.
How much are we looking for now, or depending on?
Well, here's the other thing, okay, we are showing a hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollar deficit, but.
That was a hundred and forty X something.
When our, when our new growth was certified by the state, there is an extra thirty-three thousand dollars in there. Thirty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars in there, that we have, so. Our deficit is really a hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And that's projected new growth next year, thirty-three?
No, that was certified for this fiscal year, um, so it's already.
Okay, okay, thank you. There.
Done, there and a done deal.
Okay.
So that.
And again, that was from where, the thirty-three?
Thirty-three was from new growth, additional new growth than what Ryan had projected, fifty thousand, and our new growth figure was actually eighty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
New growth. Mm-hmm.
And that was ec- due to the excise tax, extra excise tax that came in?
So I bet. Nope, that was extra, um, new houses, um, things over and above the two hu- two and a half levy.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So with your cuts of eighty-something, and at four, one forty-nine, so now we're down to.
One fifty minus.
Seventy that, seventy that we're still looking for roughly.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Almost, yeah. Yeah, closer to eighty, but yep.
Yeah, okay.
I bet you could take that thirty-three thousand dollars and change and clean up some of the numbers that you had talked about.
Yes. Yep.
To, to, to still bring this, to still bring this within line.
Respond to. Yep.
And I think. My suggestion is that this type of a budget that does not use free cash, be offered to the voters, and they can decide. I don't think, that's not something I don't think we should, we should decide.
Right.
So they have three options, they have everything stays the way it was in uh, June. And we plug the hole with a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar, whatever, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars worth of free cash.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or we take the hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, split it in half. Fund, take half of that from free cash and the rest of that is from cuts from whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And then, this little baby.
Which, this little baby is not touching.
Which is, this little baby uses no free cash.
And that's what you would like to present to the.
And those are the three options that I think we should offer the voters, and they can tell us which one they like.
Mm-hmm.
See, I I think the voter needs to know what the free cash is, you know, they think of free cash, it's like, oh, free money.
Well, that could be.
It doesn't affect anything.
Well, that would be, that would be part of the presentation, there would be a very, very high level.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Boiled down, one-on-one municipal financing, this is how, number one.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is what they voted for, so.
Yeah, number two.
Where you wanna get it from.
And number two, how did we get here?
Right.
We have that conversation. And then we present the three options, and then we take questions, and then everybody gets to decide.
Mm-hmm. Definitely, how did we get there?
It's my only thing, yeah.
Oh, yes, how we got there.
And I believe the option with using no free cash, um, I think that really needs to show them.
Preaching to the choir.
How we as a town are gonna suffer as a result of that.
The idea, my idea was to use what I've got here as the model.
Yep.
This is, this is what you approved, this is what the cut would look like, and what does, and what does that mean?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And it might be for, for some of the oxes who are getting gored here, maybe they will share what it means. That's what I'm thinking.
With the notable changes that we've already just.
Right.
That's right, that's right, so, so for example.
Wouldn't be on there again.
Uh, Travis can explain what it means. When the road repair budget gets cut in half.
Mm-hmm.
And Sandra can, can explain what it means when uh.
Let me read this.
Yeah.
Um, when the basketball court doesn't get fixed, and so forth and so on.
Basketball court.
Mm-hmm.
And so forth and so on.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you either have school, which is more important than playing basketball after school, as far as I'm concerned.
That's right, right.
So, this is what you want, this is what you gotta give up to get it.
Well, right, but, but the devil is in the details, and the, and and so. The, the consequence of using free cash to run away from all of this.
Yeah, it's, it's not running away.
Is, has to get explained as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
And letting them know that the future is.
It hurts you more next year.
Mm, that's, that's right, this is what, these are one-time savings, these aren't gonna reappear next year and poof, oh yay, we can save another fifty grand, no.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
No, that's, that ship is, that's, that's gone.
And we can expect the school department to be another two to three percent. Oh, based on what they, if not more.
Well, it will, it will, it will end up, yeah, remembering, remembering that on a forty million dollar budget, two and a half percent increases a million dollars.
Well, this isn't what they've been averaging for years.
Just divide, so divide that by five. Just for the ease of math.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And there you are, you're looking at two hundred thousand dollar hole to fill next year.
Yep.
Yep, you also have all the unions up there, their contracts are up for negotiation.
Yeah, and they always get an increase.
Just.
Alright, so let's, let's focus on this year and what, what we gotta do here, um, let's get this number down on one forty-nine eight fifty-eight, which is the real number, right?
So that's, so that's where we are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you've obviously got some concerns with some of the cuts that she's suggesting, cause you think it's gonna have detrimental.
Mm-hmm.
Effects on this office, on the ability for the town to function and all that other stuff.
Right.
So how do we get, and when do we have to get to the point where, this is a great suggestion, we've now got a new number to work with. Where Sandy says, these are the absolute things I don't think we should cut, and here's why we shouldn't cut it. Because I think we got about thirty-two thousand dollars that we can make up here, which may satisfy you, and make this.
Mm-hmm.
Handout more amenable and more agreeable to what you wanna do.
Do you want, do you want me to send you, I mean, this is the PDF, right, that I printed for everybody's benefit, do you want me to send you the spreadsheet?
Yeah, okay. That would be great.
Yeah.
My suggestions would be right off the top to add the ten grand back to legal, I can tell you, that's gonna get used.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'd be looking for a reserve fund transfer in a heartbeat.
Yeah, good luck, we don't have any.
I know.
We spend it on whatever else you want it.
So I would put that back in.
Okay.
Oh, they already took out the other.
Yeah.
The four thousand of, from the executive assistant, we've gotta put that back in.
Put that in, that's fine.
Um, I would put those in right off the bat.
Yeah. Alright, so we're halfway there, we're half, we're halfway there, careful.
Yes, I know, um.
We're gonna re-rejigger the town administrator.
Yes, so we're gonna put that thirty-four hundred back in, but also take out the merit, so that would be a five thousand dollar savings there.
No, that's a thirty-four, thirty-four hundred dollars is the.
Oh.
There's two thirty-four hundreds.
Okay, alright, so that we would take that out too, okay.
Which one are you taking out?
Which is seven thousand for both of them, is that what you're talking about, Sue?
Um, the salary, the salary that I had proposed was a hundred thousand for the uh, for the town administrator. So that's a save, that would be a savings of thirty-four eighty-two.
Right, and I'm saying put that back in, um.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Oh, you would put that back in?
Yes.
Okay, and then, but then take out the merit, so that's gonna, that's gonna save you fifteen fifty-three is all.
And then take out the merit. Okay.
Right, yeah. So that's still a net gain, I'm.
Yes. Right. Right.
Well, I gotta challenge you, why are you putting that thirty-four hundred back into the salary?
The TA?
Yeah. We don't even know, we don't even have a TA yet.
We don't, but we also know that when it was advertised, it was advertised higher than the hundred though.
Well, wasn't, was it one oh five or one ten, was that?
It was, it was ten.
It was between, yeah.
One ten and negotiable, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I don't think you're gonna be able to.
Based on experience, et cetera, you're backpedaling.
Yeah. You're not gonna be able to backpedal with the TA.
No.
No.
Well, then that number better be one ten, and not one oh three, four eighty-two, that's what you're telling me.
Yeah, right, cause it was advertised at one ten negotiable, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so.
So, we need ten grand there, is what we're saying.
That's what somebody's saying, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, we're going a couple months without paying. We're going a few months without paying.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand why you threw that number up there, but okay.
Right.
Um.
Yep. Yeah.
So you would prorate it?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Alright, so prorated, is it a hundred grand?
No, not hardly.
Nice try.
Susan, I thought you had better math skills.
I'm just, keep you on your toes.
Uh, yeah, okay, um. Yeah. Let's see.
You put a lot of thought into this, so it's really clearly obvious.
And yes, she did.
I did.
No question about it.
Yep. The building and maintenance is on a wing and a prayer, um.
That's right, that's right.
Now, if the police chief says we can cut.
That's fine.
The wages, what are you talking wages, how much?
Uh, well, how much are you looking for?
I know initially.
A lot.
I can't cut, I can't cut a hundred and forty thousand.
Well, look, no, but I mean, for thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Well, what was the position gonna be paid? What was it?
What's that?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars, and I think the number that was mentioned at the last meeting was around three grand, does that, does that sound?
I.
Not out of wages, we were talking more like twenty.
I was, I had fifteen, but.
Fifteen, okay.
Oh, oh, for.
For the size.
Yeah, but this is wages.
Flat, right?
Oh.
Yeah, because I still have to, I still have to backfill that position, so it does cost some overtime.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
When part-timers take it, it just.
Right, that's why I thought the net, net of it was three grand.
You know, right. A month?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
No.
So I can take, I can take fifteen out of my wages and survive this year.
Okay.
And still cover the shift.
And still cover the shifts, there won't be a cut in, there won't be a cut in services.
Okay. Alright, without loop, okay, no cut in services, people aren't gonna leave.
Right. Right.
Any of that stuff.
Right, yeah.
Alright. Okay, I'm counting on you.
I got it, this year. And I'll have to find it next year somewhere.
Well, we did have all the department heads at this special town meeting, so that we can.
Okay, the thing is, with chiefs, chief parents.
That's right, that's right, yeah, they all get to stand up and say what it means.
Speak to. Speak to their own departments.
In your.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, because, so we took some money from that.
We took some money from prior year, I know.
Correct, so. I figured, I figured with all the wages, the open spot, and then some of the money we took there, some of the payout and all that stuff.
Okay.
I could take fifteen, still pay the, still pay the overtime, or the, we'll call it coverage, because sometimes it's just straight pay for a part-timer.
You can still take fifteen. Right.
I can still survive this year by doing that.
Okay.
Okay, remember, there's no fin commerce or.
Alright.
I know.
Just.
There's a little left.
There's a little, okay, but the sharks are circling.
Yeah.
I, I won't, I won't be asking for barring any uh, major uh, incidents.
Well, yeah, that's.
You can use this one.
Yeah.
I'll go stand at the street with a tip pan and shake it.
Find some pencils for you to sell.
Somebody suggested one of those boots, you know how they used to do the boot thing, somebody suggested we ought to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we got. Yeah, we can.
Pretty good. You know what else, I mean. I, coming from upstate New York, the police and, but it was mostly the fire department, always did chicken barbecues and stuff like that, all the time.
Oh, all the time, oh, up in Maine, they do chowder fests and everything, we don't do anything around here, you know.
Yeah.
Those were big, those were. Those were pretty good money makers, what do you think?
They don't do anything.
I'll get the guys out there, slugging chicken.
Okay.
Whatever it takes.
Yeah, well, anyway, there's another event, that sounds like fun.
There you go, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so, trying to get.
He looks like a chicken barbecue kinda guy.
Yeah. Or pork, or whatever, I mean, you know.
Is it, is it worth us doing this right now, I mean.
We have to do this right now.
I hear you, I hear you, but is it something where you can take this spreadsheet?
Yes. We have to close the warrant, so we've kinda got.
No, cause we do it now, or else we have to have another meeting and do it then.
Alright, well, let's, let's do it.
Do it.
Well, that's what she's ready to by going down the list.
Um, we're chicken barbecue conversations, which, which isn't productive to what we're trying to do here, so.
You're no fun.
Well, it could be.
Let's, let's focus in on this.
Okay.
How much have we saved so far?
Nothing.
Well.
None.
Okay, so.
We bumped the legal backup, and we bumped up the executive assistant backup.
Yeah, that's fifteen grand, and now we just, we just saved it from police, so we're even.
Right.
So now we're back to even.
Yeah.
Pretty much, we are pretty much even right now, so we have another thirty to go.
So what other, what are your other concerns that you really don't think we should cut?
You can check with Travis, but I don't think turning off the streetlights are gonna save you any much.
No, I've, I've, I.
Cause I very much remember that conversation from before.
That's fine, that's fine, I've, I will, I will be happy to be corrected on that, I don't, I don't know.
But do you double check Travis? Cause I could, I could very well be wrong, but I'm pretty sure we still get charged for them, because the fixtures are there.
Okay. Okay.
Right, I'm also, I'm, like I said, I know the seniors have used this fifty-two hundred supplies account.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm thinking.
We're gonna need to shut them off the rest of it, then. I mean, I, the idea here was that I took, unless the supplies account or the expense account was like five hundred bucks or two hundred bucks.
Yep.
I left that alone, everybody else got the same haircut.
Yep.
So.
I s- I see as you do it percentage-wise, yes, yeah, um.
Yeah. Right, right.
So let's talk about the senior center, they are, we're looking to do, we're looking to cut.
They had two line items for supplies.
Right.
They had two.
But Sandy's saying they already spent that money, so we can't do anything with that.
They spent the, uh, the fifty, fifty-two hundred.
The services, one, the fifty-two hundred is their services, that is gone. So if you wanna do the six twenty-five out of their supplies, I think that's still, I know that's still there, it's um, okay.
Yeah, I do, I do, because I did it to everybody else.
I think everybody has to share, but yes, I know what you're saying.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um. Trying to get this back up here, let's see what happens. Okay. Alright, so, on my recommendations, things I recommended, so. It is, it's up on the screen, um.
That'll only be binoculars, so.
I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
I don't know if I can make it any bigger.
Tell me what, just tell me.
Yeah.
So the reserve fund, I had cut five grand out of, not ten.
Yep.
Um.
So we're up five.
So we're up five, um, so we got three, we got five, and we got six twenty-five.
And are we trying to get another thirty, is that, where were you, when you say?
No, 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 we're going in the wrong direction, yeah.
Oh, going in the wrong direction, I think.
The twenty-five out of the travel, so that we were gonna leave. Um. As far as economic development, we talked about cutting three grand out of there.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
What was that for?
Signs and a administrative assistant kind of intern, but we do, we have n-nothing. We don't have an intern, we haven't had an intern, and the signs haven't.
No, that's right, that's right, I remember, the signs were supposed to be money makers, but we don't have.
Oh, it's for a website.
Yeah, the website isn't there.
Right.
Signs are already being negotiated, they're already in a verbal contract, so.
Who is?
The uh.
Chair, Whitney?
Chair, that's what I was told.
How much are the signs?
She's waiting on a final, I mean, there's no, I don't think there's a signed contract, but she's waiting. She's waiting on a final, I mean, there's no, I don't think there's a signed contract, but she's waiting on prices from Hans, is it Hans?
Then that's, that's not a contract.
Yeah, she can't sign a contract anyway.
No, that's, no.
Well, a proposal from Hans on the price because of fluctuation of the materials, so he wanted to wait, uh, I'm just telling you what I was told, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's still a contract. Yeah, that's, that's, it's okay.
So, um.
Okay.
Is what it is, you gotta do what you gotta do, we gotta do it.
Someone has to communicate to her that she can't take these signs.
That's right, that, that, that needs to get polled.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is no website. That, that killed years ago.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, I'm just telling you that's how this ones, okay.
With, uh, Todd's departure.
Alright, now, I had put a little bit of a savings in the custodian, because we haven't had a custodian, um, for a few months. But I hate to cut any wages because of what Ryan said.
No, I didn't, I didn't cut them, no.
I didn't cut them.
So we'll take that out of there.
Put that, take that out, yeah.
Coverage is you're basically cutting it first, cause they're gonna, they're gonna leave you anyway.
Um.
Yeah, no, we didn't, no, we're in.
Yeah, well, a custodian's only twelve hours a week, I mean, it's my place still.
Okay. Whoops, what happened to police, where'd you go, alright, alright, so police, we said, I had twenty, we'll change that to fifteen, so Ryan's happy, um.
Threw you under the bus.
Gotta keep, gotta keep everybody happy.
You're moving the fifteen, would you, were you doing it?
Yeah, no I'm not, alright, um, I was going to cut five hundred and fifty from your supplies budget.
Okay.
I mean, I could go take a look, I could take a look at it tomorrow and try to find five hundred and fifty dollars.
Could.
Let's not, let's not do that, let's not do that, that's not funny.
Okay. Take that out too, so my, my recommendations are going way up.
That's right.
This is a problem, okay, now, in the fire chief, because I had talked to him about the call wages, there was the three grand there. And then he had said two grand out of the other one.
Mm-hmm. That's why.
But he wasn't very happy about that one, so thinking we're not gonna do that.
Then don't, yeah, I don't want, yeah, we're not gonna do that.
No.
But I did suggest, I was going to take twenty-five hundred out of his medical supplies, because he's got two medical supplies left.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Um, and that was where we talked about.
The whole, yeah, I, that, yeah, I can, I can live with that.
The whole hospital, um, account. The building commissioner, um, I had twenty-five, but.
I don't, I don't know what the real number is, I thought, at first I thought it was, I thought part-time, that it was half, and then somebody or, oh, when I was watching the video. To refresh my recollection of the meeting.
Yep.
Somebody said forty grand, so I said, you know, or we were saving twenty grand, and I said, okay, fine, so that's the number I put in there.
Right. We were gonna save twenty.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I don't know what the number was.
I will put that back in, because I was just thinking. We would just say, you have to.
Alright, hold, hold on, what about the land use coordinator, is that, can you scroll up, please?
Yeah. Yeah, land use was a position that just got split.
Split between?
Land use supplies, so land use coordinator was Mallory.
Yep, and she left, right?
Um. She left.
Okay, so you split it with the new guy.
I split it with, um.
And Tony's daughter, is that?
Yes, Gabby and Mark.
So they're each getting how many hours?
Well, between the two of them, we're at about thirty-five, so we're at about one position.
Okay.
The assistant was put in there, and I haven't taken that out. But I'm thinking, we haven't hired a land use assistant, because we have a hard enough time keeping positions full, and at this point. Because we have the building inspector, I didn't know what to do with that, it was kinda my cushion.
How much is, how, how much is it?
Ten thousand five eighty.
And what, what is the function, what is?
Mallory kept asking for a land use assistant, um. Someone to help her out and do the minutes and things like that, and we do have someone doing minutes, but not ten thousand dollars worth of minutes.
How much are they doing from, for minutes, what's the dollar amount, you think?
It's usually, even if I said three hundred dollars, they meet once a month, that's like, even if we kept five grand in there and took out the five thousand five eighty, I think it would be.
How many minutes for five grand?
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money for minutes, minutes, think about it, and an hour, an hour to do, maybe, maybe.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, it's a.
Five grand, if they're doing three hundred a month, that's thirty-six hundred. For land use, yeah, well, there's a thought process, let's hear it.
Well, no, there's been a couple of planning board meetings, um, that have been five or six hours.
They've gone six hours.
Oh, okay.
Um, due to a cell tower thing, so I know, um, and they've had weekly meetings in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a art to minutes.
Oh, I, I get that, but.
There's an art to minutes, they're getting beat to death in that grand.
Yeah.
So what's your comfortable number?
My comfortable number is to keep that at like five thousand, uh, so we could get rid of fifty-five eighty.
Okay, do it.
That's fine. Good.
Perfect.
Alright, what's that?
Alright, so we're gonna put, this is gonna go fifty-five eighty, we're gonna take a bat, okay. Um, inspectors need continuing education, I hate to take from their supplies, because what I found out, when one of our. Because we were in an agreement with Gardner for three years, we didn't purchase any, um, new.
Codebooks.
Codebooks, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so there's three years of codebooks missing.
Alright, then that's good, yeah.
And so the building inspector alone needs those, so, and I know they're expensive, no.
They're not online? Of course they're not, never mind, that's stupid, that was never mind.
I don't know, yeah. Of course they're not, because.
Yeah, the elect, electricals online, national, uh, electrical codes online.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but they're gonna.
Yeah, but then they can't sell it, so, never mind, yeah, stupid question, yeah.
Exactly. And they do sell them all, so that's why I don't wanna cut from there.
Alright. That's fine, that's fine, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, you gotta have them.
The emergency planning director, that is a stipend, um, that our emergency management director gets, they were giving him a three percent increase, because that's what. Employee, most employees got.
Is this an employee?
Yes, the director is, yes.
Okay.
Who is it?
Our emergency planning director is Dennis O'Donnell.
Yes.
Got it.
Um, the tree warden, I was okay with cutting the four grand out of his tree services.
Mm-huh, everybody runs around here with a chainsaw, cut their own damn trees.
Yeah, those balls on your street, cut it up.
How's that?
How's that?
Okay, when I talked to Travis, I was only gonna take about eighteen hundred out of his road maintenance, and, um.
Yeah.
I was going to take, like, four grand out of his supplies, um.
What's, what is, I'm sorry, what is his line item for maintenance, I, which I didn't touch, I only, I only, what it is, supplies.
His road maintenance budget is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars is what's in there.
Okay.
So I said, take eighteen hundred out of there, take four grand out of his, excuse me, equipment, supplies and materials. He said, that's anything from office equipment, so paper, that's salt, tar.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. Yep.
A hot patch, um.
Yep.
Coal patch.
Coal patch, yeah.
Coal patch, rake shovels, that kinda thing.
Yep. Yep, yep, got it, understand.
Um, so, um.
But I don't see why, so why should he not suffer the same, uh, percentage as everybody else?
I know.
He should.
And that means roads don't get done.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is.
And that's, that's where you're at.
Everybody's gotta get hurt, because always the, the face responsibility to him, we'd be coming for a supplemental, if we have a bad winter.
Cause always the, the face responsibility to him.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's winter and ice, snow and ice, so.
But that's, but that's not snow and ice, that's snow and ice, this is, this is a different line item.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
So the one sixty is, right, I am reading that number, right?
Can you scroll up again, please?
Yep.
One sixty is not snow or ice at all.
No, that's a whole separate budget.
Right, snow and ice is a separate line item, separate, separate.
I see, it says winter wages.
Uh, whatever you call it.
Can we scroll the road maintenance one?
Oh, that four thousand is his winter wages, we shouldn't do that, wait a minute.
That's why, that's why I'm questioning where, where we're, I'm like, that's gotta be snow and ice.
Wrong place. That is, cause that's under snow and ice, come on, now I'm back to police.
Okay, so where's the four grand coming?
Under wages.
He's at, right after the tree warden, he's four twenty.
Yep. What are you looking for, winter wages, right there, the sixty-nine?
If that, if that helps.
Right, that's the wages, supplies, where's his, oh, road maintenance, here we go.
Yeah, well, um, the equip, what's and equipment, so that's his whole budget for the whole year for maintaining roads?
That is.
Maintenance of the roads.
Maintenance of the roads and maintenance of equipment, so, you know, the plow that, well, no, cause that's winter, um, the lawn mowers break, or, you know.
Well, everything needs an oil change, or whatever, tires and stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, I understand that, but not a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, tires, gas, that's also fuel.
So.
Oh, it's stuff, fuel.
Yeah.
Which is.
It had gone up, I agree.
Well, it's coming down.
No, it's coming way down, so.
Oh, the diesel, diesel is great.
Um, what?
Gonna shoot right out.
Yeah, we'll see.
What percentage is that, I mean, is it, that, does he get hit the same percent as everybody else?
No.
Not on that, not on that screen.
Not yet.
No.
No.
Okay, so I mean, eighteen hundred out of one fifty-eight really isn't that much.
No, it's, no.
No.
It needs to be about ten thousand.
I'm trying to make it not hurt.
I understand, but everybody's, everybody's gonna hurt, cause this is what they voted for, so.
Well, come on.
So you wanna make this ten thou?
Well, I mean, I, I really need to talk to the guy, but.
Remember what this is, yeah, remember what this is, this is, this is the all cuts budget.
I know.
It, it's gonna hurt, that's part of the exercise.
So, so that's just like cutting brush, uh, coal patch, oh, you know, fuse gravel instead of coal patch, uh, that's what I say.
That, that, that liquid stuff that they fill the cracks in.
Yeah, they just, they made whole street, now it's bumpy as hell.
It's a little.
Yep, cracked ceiling, um.
Sucks to be us.
Yeah, but it keeps them from heaving, though, I, I do agree, but I, I, I think you gotta take a bigger chunk than eighteen hundred, that's my feeling.
Or whatever. That's right, twenty-five, well.
Ten grand.
I, yeah, I.
Well, you can take it out of that, or take it out, take it out of the supplies, I mean.
Um, well, the service, Dennis' supplies.
Can you?
So he's gotta kick in twenty-five percent like everybody else, is that what we're saying?
Out of something, and I was looking, my twenty-five percent of what I was gonna contribute was, was forty grand.
Yeah, so, let. So twenty-five percent out of his total budget, that's what we need, that's what we need from him.
That's how much?
Yeah, but his budget is.
He's huge, he's, he's the biggest after, after, uh.
I was gonna say huge, because. Yep.
Uh, school.
That's right, that's right, and I know it by him.
Leeson Fire, yeah. What if we do?
What's frustrating is nobody's budget is fat, because everybody's, you know, sticking to, sticking to the line because of the situation where, before they voted for this, you know.
No, of course not, we know that.
We're lean, and now we're in leaner.
We know that. That's right, but this is.
His services budget last year was seventy-six, and this year they're looking for ninety-seven, so I'm thinking if you cut from that.
What is services, what is it?
I had asked him to, and I can't remember now.
So let's make it eighty-six and we'll take ten.
Yeah.
I was thinking that, we can take ten from here, and that's kind of an in-between, he's still gaining ten grand, but he's not getting his ninety-seven.
What is?
Well, when I heard services, it made me think of people, and so that's why I didn't do anything with it.
It's not the wages, um.
No.
Okay, it's his third-party stuff?
Services could be, yes, it could be, um, it could be when they have somebody come in to trap beavers, it could be, um.
Alright.
That's what I'm just thinking.
Nope.
Oh, yeah, all those fun things.
Well, then the beavers are, they have their say, aren't they, they can thank us later.
Um.
So.
That is one thing he said it was, was yes, beavers, I'm trying to remember else, beaver trapping, but yes.
Outside contractors.
Okay, fine, then, then fine, then that sounds like a good place to get a haircut, I'd, I'd level fund them.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
So let's go with that.
I'd level fund them.
Take the whole twenty?
You wanna take the whole twenty?
Yes. You are, yes, let's do the totals, you're, you're upside down.
Could he have spent, could he have spent some of it already?
Um, I can look down.
I guess we'll, well, I guess we'll find out.
That's what the seniors did.
Well, he wouldn't have gone over.
He wouldn't have gone over seventy.
Hey, tons of waste that would be a senior.
Yeah, he would've seen.
There's no way, that's a year's budget.
Yeah, he wouldn't have gone over the previous budget.
No.
No, but if he anticipated getting twenty thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
Has he spent more?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't know.
Done a couple extra dams.[1504.94]
I used to get reports of, uh, budget versus actuals, are those still coming out?
Actually, I got on the accountant today and she sent out August, um.
I just got one.
Okay, oh, today? Okay.
August!
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, well. The treasurer's a little far behind on her stuff these days, I wonder.
Okay. I bet. Yeah, I bet.
Probably not gonna get any faster after that hurricane, so.
Oh, no, she's up and running, she's fine.
Oh, she's fine, okay, good. She wasn't nailed?
Nope, she wasn't nailed.
Okay. Okay.
So they have two expense accounts, you said that.
Um.
So where, where are we now in terms of?
We're still in the DP, oh, in terms of their totals?
No.
What we're looking for, yeah.
Well, I don't know, I lost track.
Not great, hold on.
Where are you going now?
I'm going down to my bottom, I have a hundred and one thousand worth of cuts right here.
That you've already cut?
We still need, we still need forty, forty, forty five.
Forty nine thousand.
Yeah.
Forty eight thousand.
I took five.
Yeah, you, you gotta go back with the.
I took the three out of Worcester Regional Retirement that we talked about, um, okay, back up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here.
Fifteen hundred from unemployment, right?
Yeah, I had taken more than that.
Oh, did you, okay.
Um.
COA, three hundred something.
I only took three hundred out of there expenses.
Okay.
We can take more. Well, you had proposed six hundred, so I'll do that.
Yeah.
From where now?
COA.
This is the COA.
See, the Council on Aging Expenses.
Oh. Does that pay for the mark bus?
No.
Okay.
Um.
Some of my other favorites that you didn't like, let's see.
There's a lot of money to like.
I know, I didn't like them either.
Yeah, veterans, what comes after veterans, I know this.
Did you take that haircut out of FinCom Reserve?
FinCom Reserve?
I think you only took five, right?
I only have, you have fifteen in there.
Yeah.
That's because you netted out the other stuff, I think, right?
No, I am only showing that that was your budget.
No? No, twenty five.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, wrong place. You know what that is, that is?
I don't know. I don't know.
Come on. That is, um.
Police?
No, that was an assessment from the state, I guess, that's where that all is, so. Where is FinCom?
FinCom is line item one thirty one.
We.
It, it does that help? Account number one thirty one.
Oh, yes, then it's way up the top.
Yeah, it's near the top.
Alright, so, uh, let's see. I was one forty nine, so I'm still too far.
We're about, yeah, we're above the accountant.
Oh, VC, yes, Finance Committee Reserve, I cut five grand.
Yeah, I cut ten.
I really don't wanna cut ten out of there.
You gotta find it, then you gotta find five grands someplace else. And more.
You're killing me.
I know, I know.
We don't have an audit this year.
Oh, we don't?
We do.
Oh, we do.
If you don't want an audit, is what I said.
Oh, oh, I see.
Yeah, there's twenty grand, but.
We have to have an audit, don't we, for our bonds and all this other stuff, yeah, some, no.
Um. So on the capital plan was an additional, I have five thousand in tax title taken out of the treasurer collector account.
Yeah.
Um, or added into my budget every year, there was an additional five thousand this year put in.
Yeah.
So that some research could be done on some parcels that we have either owner unknown. Or, um, the state was looking to purchase from us, um, one particular parcel.
They already got enough land.
Um. So, yeah, I.
Will they do the research? Let them pay all legal fees, make an agreement.
Will the state know? Because the property right now is in the town's name. They will pay us for the property.
Where is it?
Where is it?
It is off of Old Colony Road, it's like out in the middle of nowhere, um.
Those are the ones Open Space was talking about?
Probably.
Yeah, and there's a reason why they want.
Um. Yes, they're part of watershed and all that, so.
Well, yeah, it makes a connection.
Yep.
As a farm, yeah, doesn't it?
So that way they can, uh, it will go into, I don't remember if it was DCR or one of them, but in other words, it would get back on the, the tax title through. We get money from DCR and stuff.
We get money for the sale from DCR, he's saying you get about a thousand dollars in acre.
Yeah.
Um.
And then we get taxes from it, and then it would also connect properties to make interconnected trails, that, that's what they're looking at.
Right, and you have taxes.
For, and that's what Open Space wants?
Well, that's, that is town, that's what our, our.
Somebody wants. Plan thing.
Yeah, the whole town plan is, cause that's.
How many acres in this thing?
I think it was like fourteen.
About the master plan?
Yeah, the master, thank you.
Yeah.
The master plan is very Open Space geared.
I would cut it, yeah, and, and, uh, make them pay for it.
But the state said they wouldn't pay for it.
Well, then.
And Open Space pay for it?
Then they don't want it bad enough.
Maybe.
Right.
From their hay farm or something?
I agree.
Maybe. Um, that was part of the capital plan, I mean, I can, I'll put it in here.
I think we should, I think we should take it out, it's not going anywhere, it can all, if, if a windfall happens next year, we can consider re-adding it.
Yeah, windfall.
Well, the thing is, we spend the money and then we get the money back for the sale of the land and then taxes every year. So it's a long, it's a long game.
It's a process, okay.
We are playing long games.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, that's what it is.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, okay, no, that's good to know.
I'm gonna take it off of this line, but this is also my line that I use, um, to put properties in tax title for non-payment of taxes.
I think you should.
Because this really should be on the capital. The side, but for now, I'm just putting it here.
Yes.
Alright, fine.
Um. I take copy our website, can't do anything with any of that, alright. I did ask Lori about this, um, binding and safe deposit expense that's on her budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
She didn't even know what that was.
Great.
She can't remember what the safe deposit thing was, so.
Wait a minute.
We have a safe deposit? We have a safe deposit.
We don't have a safety deposit box, we have a safe.
Well, I mean, it had to be for people that used, must, that had to have some time to clerk, must have received money for something.
But last year, her budget was six hundred and forty five and this year it was up to one thousand three hundred and eighty five.
For what, though?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
And she doesn't even remember why.
Binding, is that the, the town books?
That's to bind, and she said we only do that every few years, no, not the annual report, but the, um, minutes and things.
Okay. Okay. No, there's, yeah, that's, that's that she has in her safe, all those big books.
So Lori thought we could cut that in half.
Fine, let's cut it in half, six hundred bucks.
So if, we cut that to seven fifty.
Okay. Good.
Um. We would be saving s- yeah. I can't do math now.
You got it, that's okay.
Seven thirty five, does that make sense?
Six thirty five.
Thank you.
So where are we now?
Six thirty five. Oh, we are far.
Oh, we're, we're, we just bought six hundred bucks for nowhere, yeah.
Um, election supplies, we're not gonna touch.
You're taking a nap today, no, this is gonna be a long one.
No, no, I'm just.
This is.
Well, if you're gonna do it, if you're gonna do it fifty bucks at a time, we're gonna be here all night.
It's brutal.
Yeah, I know.
What's a coordinator stipend?
Yeah.
Coordinator?
Yeah, what's, what, what kind of coordinator, for who?
Where?
Where are you?
Right there, personnel.
Oh, I'd say it for a thousand dollars?
Who's that? Yeah.
Who's the coordinator?
I don't know.
Coordinator what?
Yeah.
That is the, um, Economic Development Coordinator.
We don't have one.
What?
We don't have one, gone.
Okay.
Right?
Cause that's what we cut, the website and all that other stuff, so we'll, we'll just get rid of that too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bye bye.
So that's gotta be, that's gotta be the intern.
Maybe that's the, maybe that's the intern.
Yeah, that's the intern, we don't have the intern, we never had an intern.
And how much is that?
It was only a thousand, um, but still, thousand's not worth, thousand's closer.
A thousand?
This has to go to this.
Yeah.
Jesus.
I know.
Um, I know, this is horrible.
It all helps, but it's pain in the ass.
It's absolutely awful. So the building, I know you wanted to cut an awful lot of the buildings.
Can't touch utilities because they're going up sixty four percent.
I know.
So you do that.
But it's also maintenance of this building in the library building.
Yeah.
Well, it's with friends of the library and friends of the senior center and friends of the slave building and everybody else is for.
We just turned the phones off.
Agreed.
Well, I guess on a good note, the only thing I can say is we just replaced the hot water heater here.
Here?
Here, last winter, we replaced the furnace last winter, and the police department just got mini splits.
Mm-hmm. New AC. Yeah, which is heat, heating and cooling.
So, I guess if you're gonna cut from there.
You watch the library, one will blow the hell up as soon as you cut it.
Probably.
That thing's like nine billion years old.
Probably, so.
So they run on cold water for the winter, who, what are you gonna do?
Well, it blows. No, it's the whole, yeah, it's the whole boiler, it's like.
Oh, the boiler?
Yeah, it's like this eight hundred year old thing.
Susan, yeah, Susan had suggested cutting this budget seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
How much did we use last year, right?
One point five percent.
Which granted, we replaced the boiler and replaced the water tank and.
We still had about six grand outstanding at the end of the year in this budget, um.
That's in utilities and maintenance?
Yeah. So, if you wanted to take six grand out of there and make it twenty five.
One?
Alright.
Do it.
Yeah.
Do it.
Just roll the dice.
Yeah.
And hope for the best.
Hey, it's like, you gotta, we gotta gamble, we don't have a choice.
Well, yeah, well, all of it is, I mean.
Yeah.
I know, and you know what, I know why, but you just keep.
You can read that?
Yeah, I can read that.
Good for you.
She's young.
Youth is wasted on the young.
Give it time.
I know, oh, I'm well aware, no, if it gets, if it's dark in here or my eyes are really tired, like, yeah, no.
Chief salary, twenty thousand, police training, police education.
Yep.
We're not touching that, right?
Police, police, police.
No, we're not.
Me, well, so what's that, maintenance of the vehicles, oil changes and stickers and tires?
Tires, yep.
Yep.
Yep, not touching.
Alright.
Okay. Fire. Let's see, vehicle maintenance, well, for the most part.
We already did fire, didn't we?
Vehicle maintenance, their budget last year was twenty grand, they, we approved for twenty one this year, up a little bit, do you wanna get rid of that thousand?
Was you, was that for fire?
No, no.
Fire.
That's for maintenance, I mean, they already have.
No.
Vehicle maintenance.
Vehicle maintenance.
No, I'd leave that alone, cause the shit's get, pardon me, my, uh, the stuff's getting older.
Uh-huh.
And, don't they have a truck that's on like, I'm sure, so.
The building, eh, maintenance, I believe that's their rent that we're paying up there.
And ambulance itself. Okay. Says electric.
Yeah, now that.
It says building and heat.
Oh, you're on that one.
Which building are we talking about?
Two buildings.
The fire department building.
Yeah.
Well, probably both of them, right?
Well, the one in town or the one we rent.
It's both of them.
Both of them.
Oh, both of them, okay.
Yep. Yep. Alright, ambulance, I took twenty five hundred in medical out of there.
Mm-hmm.
Ambulance lease?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that's all about.
Well, we should know the rest of it.
I'm sure they have, have they raised, no, are we in a, how long's our lease?
We need to find out, what, they leasing a vehicle?
For, for that property.
I don't, Ryan renewed it at one point, I wanna say another couple more years.
I know. Okay.
So, that lease, the ambulance lease, oh, for the building?
Yeah.
Well, the building, no.
Don't they park it into, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, but, wait a minute, no, the ambulance lease, what is that?
Where is that?
I believe that is, cause we contract with, um, Comstar, they do our billing for us for the ambulance and, um.
Oh.
Okay.
You know, the, they deal with the insurance and all that nonsense.
Yeah.
What was the dollar amount on that?
Twenty, it was up, it's, yeah. Six, and we took a little bit out of there, twenty six eight eighty.
Okay.
Okay, then. We said we wouldn't touch that, cert support, I don't, I think that is. Just, um.
It's five hundred bucks, and we can't.
Yeah.
Training, yep.
Can't. I left it, left all that alone.
We can't touch animal control. We're touching the wages, we can't touch what, Rutland, we can't touch.
Our friends.
We've already been through DPW, he's not gonna be a happy person.
Might have to go through again.
So what did we ended up, what did we end up total cutting from DPW?
Twenty thousand.
Where's the twenty?
Out of his, I wanna say twenty two, yep, twenty two thousand.
Okay, alright.
What's his total budget, six, where?
Thirty nine.
How much?
Six hundred thirty nine thousand four hundred.
So what's that percentage? Hey, if we take salaries out of that number, what's the percentage we're cutting? Cause we're not touching salaries, correct?
Correct.
No.
Okay, so if we remove salaries from that six hundred, I'd like to know, if you don't mind, the percentage of what we've cut for a number.
Watch your mouth.
I don't have a calculator.
I do.
The supply line item that I had for that was the one fifty eight seven thirty one.
That's, that's your salaries?
No, that was this, fifty four hundred was a supplies.
Salaries are like, salaries are just over three fifty.
Three fifty, so it's basically about half salary.
Line item. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So. So that leaves about three fifty, and we've taken twenty?
Mm-hmm.
And we took that out of.
About fifteen percent.
Fifteen?
Yeah, we took that out of services.
And what are we looking for?
Twenty five.
Twenty five, gotta bump it up. That's what I say.
Can you take more out of the road maintenance and equipment?
Yeah, yeah, why not, yeah, it's just less, it's gotta come from somewhere, so, you know what?
You only get that at two thousand.
Well, one of the proposals that Susan had was take fifty, fifty thousand out of the capital budget.
That capital plan, I haven't touched that capital's thing.
Yes, so there's fifty thousand right there.
Well, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it, that's, that's where it means.
I, capital hurts me, capital is a capital, I guess, so.
Alright, then we'll take it out of there, instead of these two lines.
Good suggestion. Yep, whack, whack it for fifty then.
Good thought, good thought.
I will put fifty here just because that's capital plan.
Thank you.
Um.
Capital's nice, but, uh.
Well, if you take out of the capital, then there's no.
Can't afford it, can't buy it. Can't buy a piece of equipment, you can't buy it.
Yeah, that's the first thing we should be cutting.
There's no fixing it once you start messing with that long-term plan.
It is, that should accommodate, that's for my concern.
I know.
It does less.
Put it on hold for a year or two.
I, I'm just saying.
That's, I'm good with that.
So I'm up to one thirty eight.
The long-term consequences of screwing with the capital.
What's, what's that leave capital?
The, the worst long-term clock, eh, eh.
I need one forty nine.
We need screw with the free cash.
So where, where is the capital budget?
Well, that's what I mean, but that's why we take it from.
That is not part of this budget.
It's not part?
The budget itself, that, the capital.
No.
Oh, so where's this capital coming?
That because, we can't take fifty grand.
Hit home also with sign, signature.
Well, cause our capital budget is completely separate.
Oh, I know.
The, the only way I got this anywhere was getting it, was getting it to the capital.
From, from the town budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and our capital budget was four hundred and four thousand, cause we had already cut a couple things out of the library, so what got approved at town meeting was four hundred and four thousand.
And it got him halfway.
Yeah, we need to cut. Why can't we cut it more?
Because, because the rest of it was all equipment and stuff, and I didn't know where, I mean, maybe we can, but I didn't know where things stood.
Oh, right. Yeah. Yeah. Right, cause they had already bought the, ordered the excavator, yeah.
Or may, yeah, maybe whatever, I bet I did.
That we really don't need.
I know, we, we, okay, just, everyone stop for a second. We were here years ago and everything was falling apart around our ears and we started to make process with capital, getting forward, fixing things, we're still a long ways from home. But if you start backtracking, we will be at the same point that everything is broken and we're super screwed, and then.
Remember that this is option three, and you get to explain that at town meeting, that is what this is about.
Right. Right. I was just thinking.
A lot, a lot of the people that are here, I don't remember, they don't know, like, how bad it was.
Well, then you can, then you can tell them, then you can tell them.
When everything was broken.
But in the case of the capital planning, we approved for the, the smaller backhoe or excavator, or that wasn't, we were not replacing a piece of equipment that was broken.
No, that was a new item.
That was a different.
Yeah.
Something, there's something that they've done with a backhoe for years, now they need an excavator, so that was, to me, as far as I'm concerned, a waste of sixty five thousand.[1442.94]
It's already been bought.
I know that, but I fought for that months ago.
Okay, the only budget I never touched was the library budget. So if you wanna take. Some money out of books and materials?
I did, I took almost five grand.
Yeah, she took a big chunk.
Well, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I agree, I'm not arguing.
Forty-nine seventy-two, I'll do forty-nine seventy-four.
Hang in there, yeah, I don't wear them all the time, just to read.
So are we still talking about capital? We're not maintaining that anymore?
Well, we're on the library budget right now.
Put it on there, it's on there.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
How, how do three different scenarios get proposed in one article?
I'm not sure.
Exactly, that's why I don't understand how we can give them three different, like, alright, who's wants A, raise your hand for B, raise your hand for C.
Or you gotta explain it to them i- in layman's terms, so they understand, and, and let them make the choice.
But I think the warrant article, we have to pick one, and I'm gonna say you picked the middle one.
Think you can put three.
Ra- and, and put that.
Isn't that what floor amendments are for?
Exactly.
Isn't that how that all works?
Right, floor amendments.
But that's not what's going to the people in their homes, when we put this on paper.
Right, oh, I bet a little something else could also go out.
Well, I'm just saying, that's not what's there.
That's a warrant, and then there are the other communications.
Right.
Yeah, can't we send out a proposed?
We can send out.
To the town meeting, can't we send out a proposed cut?
Three options.
And then let's.
Well, no amendments work then. That's how they got the school budget.
That's right.
They send out all their, yeah, they send out emails to town, to all the people that have children.
The finance committee would be warm to sending out a little enclosure with the warrant, what do we think?
Yeah, the following cuts have been recommended due to the approved budget.
But what is the article that they're gonna vote yes or no on?
Right.
What are we gonna put before them to vote on?
I think you put the vote for the cuts.
The cuts, right?
Yeah, you put the votes for the cuts, that's what we want them to see.
Read.
They've got them by the bullet.
That's what we want them to see, not the free cash fairy is gonna come and bail us out.
I'm chuckling now.
So where are we with the, with the cuts we've made so far?
I need six thousand sixty-eight dollars.
Oh, yay, good work, did you take it out of FinCom yet?
Yeah, I thought we already took some, ten from the, ten from.
Did you, I don't know, I.
I took five out of FinCom.
Five and five or something. Now you only need another thousand dollars or fifteen hundred or whatever, this number is almost done.
I thought you just said she needed six thousand, how much you need?
I need six thousand sixty-eight.
Six thousand sixty-eight.
Yep, so take five out of FinCom.
She did already.
You did already?
I took five.
No, I mean for a total of ten.
No, no.
No, she didn't, they won't, I thought we only.
But I only took five.
I thought you did ten and ten.
No, we did five.
Another hour.
No, I'm not gonna make you stay here another hour.
I can all night, let's do it.
Alright, so you wanna take.
I got all night too, I'm just trying to.
Do you have any expenses? You have two hundred in expenses.
That's for our membership in the what you call it.
Okay.
So that.
The what you call it?
Yeah.
Well, we, we talking six thousand, why can't we take that from capital?
Cause there isn't anything left in capital.
They already took it.
We, we would, we would be given, given travel, given road ma- road repairs, a further haircut, which I am not allergic to.
Recreation, what have we hit them up with?
I took a thousand out of recreation.
Alright, what's, what are they, what are they getting?
They are getting seventy-five hundred, which is.
Twenty-five percent?
Oh, I.
Is an increase.
I thought the five thousand, it was a five thousand dollar increase, which I thought were for the, the.
Trash thing.
Trash things that need to go.
It was, the other thing she was talking about was a solar.
Yeah, solar trash. Rec, trash compatible.
Yeah, and she said those weren't. She had talked to you about them, but that they really weren't. Going to be a reality, she didn't think, so we could cut more out of there.
Then I would cut the five and level fund them.
Yep, agreed.
And then if you're looking for the thousand dollars in change, take that, did you take that, not, you did not take anything further from FinCom?
I did.
Take that.
She just did.
I did, I took the five.
Oh, you did, okay.
Alright, so what are we at?
So I am at.
That should get us there.
Then we should be there, now should be over.
One fifty-one, seven ninety, we can give two grand back.
Give it to FinCom.
Give it back to FinCom. Well, we'll be bailing everybody sorry you know what out, so we're gonna.
Not very long.
No, that's for sure, alright.
Now look at the magic number.
Alright.
Our magic number is now.
Does it put?
On budget, I'm sorry.
While we're young.
Everything's. Everything's tied at this point in time.
We are at one forty-eight, seven.
Ninety.
Is that our number, what do we need?
One forty-nine.
Eight fifty-eight.
We gotta put. Alright, so we'll take another grand out.
Fine, take it out of.
Put it in finance. Finance committee, we're gonna change for seven to eight thousand. And then we should be there.
Are we there? Yep.
One forty-nine, seven ninety, we are sixty.
We're short.
Four dollars short.
Take it out of FinCom. Come on, kids.
Everybody wants to go home, I see.
We're just taking another hundred out of there.
We're gonna, we're gonna deflate your budget.
At this point, it doesn't, it doesn't.
You're just gonna have to tell everybody to give out IOUs.
Well, too bad.
Yeah, it is what it is.
It's too bad.
Yeah, that's, you can't prevent it.
Stinks when there is that.
We the people voted this in.
One forty-nine, eight hundred ninety dollars.
Is that correct?
Really?
Perfect.
Are we there, we fought?
I got too much.
What?
What the hell?
Bye. Eight ninety minus.
Give it back to FinCom.
Thirty-two dollars.
Back to FinCom.
Back to FinCom.
Thirty-two dollars.
And I'll, and I will share this with you anyway, and then, because we're gonna wanna lay it out in, I'm thinking in, in this kind of a.
Format, yes, that would be, yeah.
So will we all meet again before the special town meeting?
Oh, I hope not.
Well, like the hour before.
I mean, we better, I mean, who's gonna?
We'll meet, we will meet before.
Reason I'm asking is who's gonna do the.
Who presents it?
I, I will present it if everyone is, if everyone is happy.
Are you going line item after me, this is where this, this much came from here, or this?
I might, I might.
Okay, cause they, they really need to know where it came from.
I agree, everybody's getting hurt. I agree with you, I don't, don't throw big figures at them, I want them to know where. Everybody's getting hurt, you know?
My intention in putting this together and then. Doing other stuff is to do, as I said, a very high-level presentation. Of municipal finance one oh one. How did we get in this, how, how did we get here? And then what the budgets, the different budget variations will look like. This will require that some, that there are some floor amendments or something happening to get three options in play. Because what I would want to do is lay out the three options in this format.
Sure.
And then explain what the consequence is of using free cash.
Should those amendment, uh, proposals come from members of the finance committee?
Sure.
I mean, other than that, we'd have to find some people to, to step up and make.
It would, it would come, yeah, it can come from, it could come from us.
Unfortunately, I can't, won't be there.
I don't know if Josh will be there or not.
What's the date?
Twenty, twenty-six.
October twenty-sixth.
He'll be there.
Yeah, I will be there. Well.
Are you comf- would you be comfortable doing that?
Making an amendment, sure.
Okay, alright.
I mean, if I'm in the pre, I mean, I can make the amendments too, I can, we can all, we can all do it.
On the.
Any citizens.
And we'll, and we'll work out, and, and we can work out the mechanics, and if we wanna do it.
I suppose technically one of us could, just stepping down.
Anybody can make that.
Yeah, if we wanted to do a dry run, we'd do that, also.
I think that would be smart.
Suggest that not happen in a public meeting, so.
Oh, I see, yeah, I got you.
Few, um, who would be treated to the dry run. Which I will be starting to work on here pretty soon. Um.
So the motion is gonna be to make these cuts, that's what the, that's what the article's gonna be. And that's gonna be the recommendation, that's gonna be the recommendation of the FinCom, so it might be kinda weird to have the FinCom offer an amendment. To what it's already recommended. So it should come from the floor, some other plant.
Yeah, but, I mean, you're making, you're doing an amendment to show them the three options though, are you not? Is that what the amendment's for? To show you option number one, two, and three? But all, all the options are coming from FinCom.
We have the, yeah, we have the three options, this is the one we recommend.
Right.
But we're gonna let you.
Choose.
Where, but you get to pick.
Right.
But that's the one we're gonna recommend, right? We're gonna recommend this one, right?
If we're recommending it as a finance committee, why should somebody from finance then say, well. This, here's a, here's an amendment to it, even though we already recommended it.
Because, for the reason that we want the voters to decide, the limit, I don't wanna get into all the, the procedures. Of why we were stuck with recommending just one, and maybe I'll call my friendly town council. And, uh, get some, get some advice on how to do that.
A normal question's gonna come up from the floor, anyway, what are our options?
Right.
I mean, that would be a normal reaction to this, I would think, someone's gonna say, do we have any options?
Yeah, it's a, a two and a half over. That's not guaranteed either.
Can I do that, make an amendment to the motion to suggest all free cash?
That's, that should be one of the amendments, is that's one of the three options.
Right, but as, can I as the interim TA do that?
You're a resident, right?
No.
Oh, well then, no, no.
Has to be a resident.
Has to be a resident, okay.
Well, that's a procedural thing we can noodle, we can, I'll ask and get some, get some advice on that, now we can't figure that out.
Be, to consider the amendment, and then there'll be discussion, and the amendment may fail.
Help us out.
So now we're back to the original proposal.
Your friendly audience member is there.
Is your friend, is my friendly audience member going to be there?
Not at this time.
Oh. Well, why not, you're at everything else.
Well, I gotta take off for deer season sometime.
Say, hey, that's an honest answer.
Well, well, that's the shape of things to come, isn't it? Isn't it, okay.
I'm trying to think, it's an employee that lives in town.
That's not, I. I don't.
Well, I mean.
You can't, yeah, cause like to amend it, you're only amending one, and then if that passes, you never even get to the third. There needs to be something that shows the three at once, like a side-by-side before. Like I meant, I don't know how to.
What if I just presented it, and it's not, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's not part of the warrant? And I just present it, and then if somebody.
I don't know.
If somebody wants to make a floor amendment.
I would, yeah, you, I, see, like council says how, the best way to present.
Things at town meetings, so.
But I think council will have some kind of procedural, how to present all three, so they can see them, so that way, cause you can't, if you say one. And then you never even get to the second, how the hell do they know about a third?
Do we have to create three separate articles for each scenario we wanna put people in them?
It's one article, we're voting on a budget. It's just what numbers we're gonna use, right?
But here's, but this was the, this was the beef, I think, um, articulated at the August town meeting, which I watched. You remember that I wasn't there, but I did, I did watch it, and I, there, one of the comments I heard afterwards.
Deer hunting in Canada.
I was, I was, and I came up short there too. Um, the, uh. The question was, why didn't we have an alternate budget ready to go, in anticipating that the quabber number would pass?
Right.
And that was a strategic decision made at the time. So, to your point then, what if we did lay out the alternatives, assuming that we start with this, and it gets voted down? Then what, what are we gonna do, have another town meeting?
No, we can't.
No, we're not, so I think we do what, what, uh, we suggested. And do, uh, A, B, and C, and if A passes, then we don't need B and C.
That's three more arti- uh, two more articles we have to add to this.
Man, so what?
I'm just saying, that would be.
But in terms of, um. Parliamentary procedure. If a, if one article's presented, you can't go to another one until it's voted on.
Well, that's right, that's right, but everyone, but everyone.
Takes away the presentation, because.
What happens if they all get voted down?
So, couldn't we, if Susan makes her, if Sue makes the present. If Sue makes a presentation and explains.
Yep, take it off from free cash.
And there you go, knock yourselves out.
End the story, now worry about it next year.
If Sue goes over our recommended, recommended all-cuts budget, and in your discussion. Besides municipal finance one oh one, et cetera, go into alternatives that. If anyone from the floor would like to offer an amendment, by her discussing that, she can discuss option two and option three. And allow, now you, now you've laid it all out, a fifty-fifty or all-free cash, I guarantee you, someone's gonna offer all-free cash. Once they know the all-free cash is available, they're gonna take that and say, no.
Cash is about, they don't know.
If they don't understand what it's about, and they might, that's the risk we run with this.
But we gotta try to make them understand the danger of that.
Always run with this, this is the risk, this is how we got into it, that's right, and if that's where they're headed, then that's where they're headed. And maybe some people will be watching this and will start to organize themselves in one way or another.
Well, then why do we?
Why are we giving them that option?
Exactly, why even offer the all-free cash option? Because it's an option, it's an option.
And we gotta have a budget.
Cause it's transparency, we have to show them all the choices. We have to be transparent, we just can't hide the free cash.
Yeah, cause bottom line, we do have to have a budget.
No, no, but it's.
We have that option, ev- every year we make the budget.
Yeah. But it's more transparent, I think.
So if all three fail. Then we have to do this all over again.
That's right.
Yep, till, till something passes, yep.
That's right.
Better open up a line of credit somewhere to keep the town operating.
We're gonna close it down?
No, you can't do that. We'll file for chapter, chapter whatever.
Eleven.
Macracy.
We used to be part of Rutland, couldn't.
Yeah, maybe he'll take us back.
No, we secede commercials.
What we wanna do is we wanna present what we just worked on, and we want it to pass. If that doesn't pass, we've got a plan B, but we can't get that in front of the public to vote on it that same night, is that a fact?
No, we can't.
Unless someone stands up and makes all those amendments to plan A.
Somebody's gonna make the amendments, but then we can still vote on it the same night.
And I don't, I still don't see the problem with somebody from FinCom making the amendment.
As long as.
I don't see that as being, I don't see that as being inconsistent. Or if we have a vote.
Yeah, I would say.
I can vote no, and then I can be the, be in our, in terms of our own recommendation, it's not implied that it's unanimous. What is, what is suggested is that, is that the FinCom, a majority of the FinCom members approve this thing, and so the, the crank on the committee. Didn't vote for it, and is gonna get up and present.
But again, for transparency purposes, I, I would think if you made the amendment, for example, and then in the explanation of it. We're saying, we have other options, we wanna be able to get out to you.
Right.
And that's certainly.
Well, for that matter, why can't one of us get up and?
Well, technically you can, we just walk away from the board, you go look down at the mic as a citizen, and you make the amendment, yeah.
So, any one of us can do it.
Citizens.
Cause we're not at a mea- we're not at an open meeting, right, I mean, it's open.
It's open.
It's an open meeting, okay. Well, I know it's an open meeting, but.
It's not a meeting of the select.
We're not, it's not a meeting of the select board, that's what I, so, we're just there as citizens of the town.
Well, we get to vote, we get to do all of, all of the citizenry activities.
The only thing is we're officers of the town, but, but we have voting capabilities on anything that comes forward.
Speak to our own.
As, as like, any normal resident, whether they volunteer or not.
Right.
Right, same thing.
So I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand the, the semantics of the meeting, so we present this budget. Does it go to a vote, or does somebody make an amendment to it before it gets to a vote?
We make amendment to it before it gets to a vote.
Yep.
Well, then they're never gonna get the chance to vote on this budget that we just worked on. If the amendment fails, they would.
It would go back to, uh, yes.
I think that's.
No, but that's an interesting, that's an interesting point.
Because if you amend, I, I, no, I see what he's saying.
No, why do you?
And then people just like, they don't know, and they're just like, okay, I'm confused, and we just.
But the only way you can get all the things done in one night is through, is through the amendment process, so.
There might be, but I think, but I think regardless, um.
My fear is that the third amendment, and they say, let's just take all the stuff from free cash, and everybody's gonna jump on that. Right. To get home and watch the ballgame.
Which is something that we.
Do not want to have.
Want, so why are we even presenting that?
This, this, this is inviting an amendment. Right.
That is inviting an amendment.
All cuts is inviting an amendment.
So what?
No, 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 that's, that's, that's the point.
It's, it's provocative in, in a good sense, okay?
That's right. Yeah.
And somebody could get up, you could get up and, and make an amendment to cover half of that with free cash. Somebody could get up and say, well, why don't we cover a hundred grand of it with free cash versus the seventy-nine, whatever it comes down to.
And then we'll have.
And then there would be a, yes.
And then if someone offers, if the fifty-fifty option goes through, is that prorated?
All the way down?
All the way down the line.
How do you cha- how do you make a change?
We have to consider that.
Yep, well, I think, I think.
Which means we couldn't vote on it.
We'd have to say.
We have.
You could word, you could word it where, where fifty percent of all cuts, I mean, what? Fifty percent of all cuts is what would end up happening, you could word it that way.
Yeah.
And, and not refer to every single line, you could refer to them as percentage, I think, if town.
Or you can do, you can present an amended budget using half of free cash. And put in the line items that you want changed, on the amended budget.
We were going to do, that's what I thought option B was.
Do that.
It's a, it would be a lot more, a lot more detail in that amendment.
A lot more transparent too, you know, okay, so we're gonna use seventy-three grands, so we'll give DPW ten grand back. And we'll give reserve five grand back, and, you know, um.
No, we, or we could just be a percentage. No, we, or we could just be a percentage.
I would just do that, I would just do the cleanest thing, which is just go down, yeah, just go down like you're saying.
We cut him, we cut him twenty.
Cut him ten.
Cut him ten.
Right.
We cut him seventy-five hundred, cut him thirty, thirty-seven fifty, you know?
Right.
We can do it that way. There again, we can have somebody on the, come up on the floor and say, what do we need this for anyway? You know, like say we're cutting, I don't know.
I'm gonna rely on our town meeting members to shut that down.
Hopefully.
I suspect that no one's gonna wanna get into the weeds on this.
You know, I mean, especially like if the seniors hear that their budget's gonna be cut at all. You know, that, that may be a.
Maybe they'll go to the meeting.
Maybe they'll go to the meeting and maybe.
They missed the last one, so.
Maybe they'll get to learn that everyone is in the same boat here and no one got special treatment.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Nor does anyone deserve any special treatment as far as I can see. So, that's not.
I do too.
Okay, so let's clarify it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's what I was just about to say, um. So I think we, I think we know what we want for the warrant, so we can close the warrant tonight, right? Because we gotta do that.
Yep.
And then we can talk strategy, can we talk strategy about town meeting, maybe another night or at a different meeting or something?
We only have.
We're running out of time, yeah.
We have a meeting on the eleventh. We have a meeting on the eleventh.
I think, I think council has to weigh in on this.
In the seventeenth.
I think council has to weigh in on this, before we can sit here and talk a whole bunch of strategy, I think Chris is right.
Can you call them tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, um, but are we clear that we're offering two options and not three, is that what I understand?
To all free cash.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so two options.
Are we agreed to?
Right.
Oh yeah, I don't wanna add the third option.
Just making sure.
I think that would be reckless.
Just closing the loop here, just making sure I understand. Two options.
Well, it's gonna beg the question, someone's gonna say, well, if we were offering fifty percent of free cash, can't, someone's gonna say, well, why can't we do all of it? And that's.
I will explain why that is.
Somebody can drop an amendment for that, right?
I'm gonna do it, well, I'm going to explain why that is stupid and reckless.
Right.
Next year, we need, that's your answer.
And reckless wins, then stupid and reckless wins, wouldn't be the first time that's happened, now would it?
We can't control it.
Yeah, somebody does, but we, as finance and select board should not make that type of.
That's right.
We can only recommend.
I agree.
We, we voted against the budget and they didn't go along with us anywhere.
It's not a, it's not an option that us as the purveyors of the town think is good for the, for the town, for our constituents.
It was never gonna be an, a recommended amendment, it was just going to be informational to, if we're gonna lay them out, lay out the options. Personally, I think we should lay out all the options that we're comfortable laying out.
Right.
I agree.
And, and, and that includes all free cash to, to, to kill the hole. That, that does include that as an option. It's not something we recommend, but it's an option that the people can consider. And if someone wanted to make a recommend, an amendment, and it goes through and gets approved, then that's how it happens.
Yeah, I mean, somebody could stand right up and say, wanna make an amendment to take all deficit from free cash? And if they could vote it in, they would have a choice. We just recommend what we feel is the right thing for the people.
To speak, but we get to speak to the wisdom of that.
Right. Susan will stand up and say, before we take that vote, here's what you're signing up for.
We get to be persuasive, and then, yeah, that's right, then everybody gets to vote and that's how, that's how it works.
Yeah, we can only recommend.
And argue persuasively.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah, I just did.
I'm trying to think, are we at that point?
Well, I mean, with, with, we've gotta specify that we're, we're closing it and article, the article one is gonna be.
Other articles, I don't even know what.
The other two we already did.
We already did them, oh, good.
That's why we got rid of those first.
Okay, motion made and.
Standby, you've got this documented, the changes we just made to, to this, and that's, that's what we're voting on right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion made and second to close the, uh, special town meeting warrants. Any further discussion from either side?
Who seconded it?
I did. He did. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried.
That was fun.
That was cool.
Wow.
You're welcome.
Quote Winston Churchill, he said, when you're going through hell, keep going.
That's right, yes, that's right.
Trunk it on through.
Our work here is done, motion to.
Cup your shoes. Alright.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Susan, by the way.
But we will be dealing with it before, this again, before the meeting, right?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, okay.
We gotta get together at some point, sometime before we.
Yeah, we'll figure something out, I'll hook up some stuff and talk to them.
Thank you all, for your time. Susan, thank you for all that.
You're welcome.
So FYI, I'm out of town early next week.
Okay. Okay.
The rest is gonna go fast here, guys, so.
Hopefully, let's roll, come on.
Upper, we're not taking up tonight, so they'll be tabled. Do you even wanna put it on a date yet?
Um, we can put it on the seventeen.
Okay, let's.
Um, we'll move it to October seventeen.
Pass over that.
October seventeen, or steps, meeting, next meeting?
You know what, guys, we are gonna be together so much.
We've got a meeting every week.
Oh, from now until the twenty-sixth?
Well, we're meeting on the eleventh, next week.
Saturday, the fifteenth.
Saturday the fifteenth.
TA.
Yeah.
And then Monday the seventeen.
Yeah.
Um.
Is that not made up, is that on our calendar already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I heard.
Yep.
Awesome.
We're just.
We're meeting, we're meeting next Monday for what?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Um, we have, it'll be an executive, um, session meeting, um, Carolyn is gonna be here and the zoning board is gonna be here.
Yep, that's an important one.
Okay.
Yes.
We're not done.
These aren't ours.
Oh, okay.
He's scratching his leg and moving around.
Okay. Uh, on the new business then, B, the November, January holidays, uh.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Okay, so usually the board, um, votes holidays for, um, the employees for around the Christmas season, um, this year, the new union contract with DPW, they have both Thursday and Friday off for, um, the Thanksgiving holiday, that's part of their contract now. Um, we were suggesting a lot of, us were talking, we need to do some cooking. We were going to ask if we could close at two on the twenty-third, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Um, and also, um, usually, we're gonna take the day after Christmas because Christmas is on Sunday, so take the Monday off, the same with New Year's, take the Monday off, which would be January second. And, um.
You didn't mention December twenty-second.
Right, and December twenty-second would be normally in place of Christmas Eve, we used to get out at noon time. Um, but.
Saturday, Thursday.
That is a Thursday, but the employees who work on Fridays, such as police, DPW, all that, they would get out at noon time on Friday instead.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so let's go over this again?
No.
November twenty-third, the day before Thanksgiving, you wanna leave at two?
Yes, please.
What goes on that day, anything?
No. Well, other than we go home and cook.
Be open?
Eight.
Why don't you go home at noon time?
I'm okay with that of yours, I was gonna stay till two, but if you're okay with noon, I'm okay with noon.
I'm okay with noon.
I also have a warrant, so I'll be cutting checks that day, but, um.
Yeah, okay.
Are you gonna have enough time to cut checks and everything?
No, make it, make it. Make it noon, cause the Christmas one is noon too, so make, you know.
Okay.
And what's December twenty-second?
That is the Thursday before Christmas.
Thursday before, Friday before the Sunday, Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Well, I was traveling.
And what's December twenty-sixth?
That's the Monday after Christmas.
That's the holiday.
That's the day we'll take for the holiday, instead of Friday.
Yeah.
So the twenty-second, you're gone at noon, twenty-third is what?
Friday, we don't work on Fridays.
Fridays, right, okay, yeah.
But the people who do work on Fridays, they would work all day on Thursday and leave at noon on Friday.
Okay. And December twenty-sixth is the Monday you'll be taking for the holiday.
In the same as January second.
Okay. Could we, uh, get a motion then to, to make it simpler all around, to accept, um, the closing suggestions for the, as presented?
I will make that motion to accept the holiday season closings as printed on this list here. By, oh, updated with the, the, the noon on the, the November twenty-third.
Right. Motion made and second, thank you. Uh, any discussion, questions, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Interim town clerk, uh, again, Sandy?
Sure, so Lori's last day is this Wednesday, um, the fifth is her last day. And, um, so because we have a town meeting coming up and, um, elections and early voting and early, um, voter registration, um, I reached out to Joyce Green, our former town clerk, and asked her if she would be willing to help us out. Um, and I will say, um, there was a little hesitation, but she did, um, agree. And, um, I don't blame her, I wouldn't wanna come out of retirement myself once I'm there. But she's willing to help us out, uh, on a part-time basis. So she has agreed to be there for town meeting and oversee that, um.
So nothing over here?
Um, she would also.
She's gonna help out the new hire, yeah.
She would also work over there on a part-time basis, um, like nineteen hours a week, just to be over there and see us through the election, um, process, because that is a.
And no more than that, yeah.
Huge, her time would end after the election is, is done. Um, we've.
Pretty good chunk of change for nineteen hours a week.
Yes, but.
But you're not paying benefits, so.
Right.
What, uh, so what's?
And we have experience.
Right.
Which, you know.
What is, what is, what does the benefit cost for, for an employee in, at, at the town clerk's position?
As far.
As far as holiday sick time?
Oh, gosh.
So it's probably more than fifteen dollars.
Oh, definitely.
So, I, I think that's, you're getting a pretty good bargain then.
We're getting a decent bargain there.
So what's the nine, nineteen hours times what, fifty bucks?
Forty-five.
Fifty an hour.
Oh, fif- fifty, yeah.
So what's that, what's that equal, and what, 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 I mean, what is, how does that compare to what we normally pay?
Well, we normally pay a full-time, Lori's rate of pay right now is twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Right.
Um, plus it's thirty-five versus nineteen hours a week, so it pretty much will.
Promise to wash.
Wash itself out.
Yeah.
Um, I have also, we have reached out, Lori has been great about helping me with this, but we have reached out to, um, the Town Clerks Association in Massachusetts. We have put advertisements, um, on there for both an interim town clerk as well as a new town clerk, hoping that maybe somebody that was an assistant town clerk might be interested. We have gotten zero response.
Nobody wants to work.
Um, not only that, this job requires a lot of flexibility in hours and such with elections and town meetings and things like that.
Elections aren't every other week, they're only once a year, twice sometimes.
But the early voting, which is another thing I was gonna talk about in my TA report, but the early voting this year.
Yeah.
There are two Saturdays that that entails, as well as the Saturday after the election is the last day that the town clerk can accept mail-in votes.
Yeah.
So somebody will have to be here.
That was thrown at us, it wasn't something we planned on, and, and the legislature voted that in without a vote of the people, so.
That's right.
You gotta live with it, and we have to bear the brunt of the cost.
Exactly.
So, shame on them.
So, that being said, um, what, um, Jeff and I interviewed, we had had two outside applicants, um, so we interviewed those last, we, we had three outside, um, applicants, and we chose to interview two.
Any from town, just saying?
Um.
No, Rutland and, uh.
Rutland, where was she from?
Templeton.
Nobody from town?
Rutland, Templeton.
Wants to work here from town.
Nope.
I can't figure it out.
Um, so we interviewed those two candidates and we, Jeff, I and Tony were in on the interviews. All three of us felt very strongly about one candidate. Um, she is from Rutland, she is willing to learn. She has customer service experience, banking experience, um.
Is that resume in our package?
No, not yet.
Can we get it?
I can give that to you, yes.
Thank you very much.
Um, so we have asked her about it, she is willing to come on board. Um, my hope is that if she starts, we will be able to have Joyce train her while Joyce is here working part-time. And that would fill that need too, because this girl would not have to come in and get no training and learn it all on her own.
So, I, may I speak, please?
Yeah.
Jeff, uh, I have a couple of questions. How many hours does it take to get them certified at the state level?
Oh, that's years, that's like three years.
Three years.
Yeah.
A minimum of three years to be certified.
So you gotta be a town clerk for three years to be certified as a town clerk?
Right, because Lori had not.
You have to take, you have to take.
You have to take schooling and things like that.
Probably do online classes.
Had not gotten her certification yet either, um.
It takes a while.
It does.
Yep.
So, okay, alright. Is, so, but there's other things that's involved with that, she has to be in the Republic, is that part of it?
She will.
Which is easy, it's an application, that's all.
Right, um, we, this girl is able to be bonded, which is another thing. Um, we have to have somebody who, who has the ability to be bonded. And she is able, after being in banking, you know they are, so, um.
Yep.
Um, and if I might just throw in one of the considerations when we were interviewing, the situation we find ourselves in, we really have to get someone on board.
Yeah, but you can't lower your standard.
Well, the point is, we have an election, we have a town meeting that needs to be certified, et cetera, and we will not have a clerk ask for Tuesday.
I understand that.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think we're lowering our, our, our standard, nor are we worried about those situations, cause we've got Joyce on board who's gonna help us through those things.
That's what, that, that, I'm just trying to, that, that's why we, we, to do all of this.
Like a quality candidate, so what's?
And keep in mind, Lori was hired with no town clerk experience, the same with Joyce, she was.
And Joyce relayed that to me when I talked to her on the phone, she said to me, she was elected cause at that time, the position was an elected position, and she said, I had absolutely nothing. And she came in the next day, the old town clerk was gone because of an election.
Yep, listen, the best way to learn is on the job, so.
It is, but if you have someone there to be able to train you and show you things, I think, I think that's gonna be a huge asset.
And she'll learn like this.
Yes.
Well, I agree.
Gonna learn under fire, because she's got an election and a, a special town meeting.
Yeah, but she's gonna have somebody there with her, you know what I mean?
So, yeah, we were trying to play this out as the best way we possibly could in this situation, so.
Rock hard plays, here we go.
So is there something, is there something we need to vote on, or are we just good to?
If you're willing to vote on having Joyce, um, come on board, I think that she was looking for a vote. Um, of the select board.
Including her at the fifty dollar. So if we can get a motion then to accept, uh, Joyce Green as our interim town clerk.
Sure, I, do you want me to do it?
At a rate of fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, I would like to, Karen, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, bring on.
Joyce Green.
Joyce Green at the rate of fifty dollars an hour as an interim town clerk and to help, uh, the new hire when we do hire somebody.
I think we should, if we could amend part of that or add to it, uh, her ending date, which would be after the.
Would be after that November twelfth date, um, is the date that the last votes have to be counted. I'm not sure when that has to be certified though.
Well, she said she would see us through the election, so I'm sure she's.
I'm gonna say like November fifteenth.
Okay.
Are you sure about that?
You wanna say twentieth, just?
November twentieth?
How about the third, the end of the month?
Okay.
Okay, through November?
Thirtieth.
Or how about till the vote is certified, how it was worked that way?
We could say that.
Yeah, okay.
How do we know how long she wants to stay?
She doesn't.
She does.
She's very clear, through the election. She's very clear, through the election, okay.
So how uh, so why does the election, why does the date keep changing, when's the election?
The actual election is November eighth.
Okay, so why are we keeping it till the thirtieth?
Because we have to take.
Certified the vote.
Well, we have to take a vote through the twelfth.
Okay.
And then they have to be counted, and then they have to be certified, so it's at least through the twelfth. I don't know how the certification process.
So election day doesn't really matter.
But I'm sure Joyce.
It doesn't.
She's a, she's aware, I'm sure, because she's.
Okay.
And she's been in and talked to Lori, so she's kinda up to speed on a lot of it.
So what's the date we wanna talk about?
There is no date, isn't it?
We can just say.
Until the vote is certified by the state.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made.
Oh, I haven't even heard the motion yet.
Oh.
We gotta amend the motion, don't we?
He did.
He did.
Yeah, he amended it through the.
So.
Certification, yeah.
Would you like me to start over?
Just sure.
Yes, please.
Alright. Karen, I'd like to make a motion.
Recognize.
To uh bring on, I forget her name again.
Joyce Green.
Joyce Green as an interim town clerk at the rate of fifty dollars an hour until the November vote is certified.
Second.
Motion made in second.
I think we need to say how many hours a week we're bringing her on for.
Um nineteen.
I think we need that in the motion.
Let me start again.
Please.
Why don't you do the motion then?
Cause I don't have it in front of me.
Neither do I.
Wanted to make the motion.
Alright, are we all done?
Yeah.
Before I make a motion, do anybody else think of anything else to add? We got of the rate of pay, when she's terminating, and the date, right?
Mm-hmm.
Hours per week.
The number of hours.
Hours, nineteen hours per week. Satisfied, everybody?
Effective.
Effective.
October.
Somebody write this off for me, I've had it.
I know.
Effective date.
October sixth, twenty twenty-two.
October sixth.
If we're gonna do it, we're gonna get it all in there, right?
Right on, we gotta be, we gotta be accurate.
I I agree.
Gotta be accurate.
So let me try it again, I'd like to make a motion, Chairman.
Okay.
To bring on Joyce Green as the interim town clerk at the rate of fifty dollars an hour at nineteen hours a week until the vote is certified in November from the election.
Starting.
Starting on October sixth, two thousand twenty-two with an end date once the vote is certified.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
At nineteen dollars an hour.
You said that.
No, nineteen hours, I'm sorry.
Alright.
Nineteen hours, you're good.
I'm so confused now.
You're good, you're good.
Okay.
We got her?
Yes, good.
TA report.
Okay, I have a very quick TA report, um.
You don't have to be quick.
Um yeah, I don't know what I did with it, but I had a TA report.
So the interim's.
So I wanted to let you know that we did receive the offer money.
Hold it.
The remaining four hundred and, that's in my notes, um sixty-eight thousand, I think it was. Um we received, and it's not in my notes, nice, okay, um. It's in here, man.
So much.
I have so much, I know, I'm sorry, I feel so unorganized. Um that was one thing, the other thing I wanted to update you on is the TA search committee. Um they have met last week, they interviewed five candidates.
In person?
In person. Um they've narrowed the vote down to three for the select board to interview on October fifteenth. You will be receiving um the packets on October seventh, um which will have all the information on those three candidates, um they're not putting it out before then because once that's made public, it's made public and those people, you know, their employers will know, et cetera, kind of thing, so they've waited until October seventh to release that to you so you'll have a week or so to review it before we meet on fifteenth at nine AM.
Bringing the coffee and the donuts.
We're doing that here?
We're doing that here.
So what day's the stuff?
Do we have any money in the budget for coffee and donuts?
We'll have coffee and donuts.
I'm just kidding.
So they're reviewing, so Friday it's getting dumped in our holder?
From nine to up from three.
She eats donuts.
Friday it's getting dumped in our drawer, so what?
Friday, I'm not sure, Tony was gonna talk to um them and see if it's being emailed to you all or if there's gonna be actual physical packets here that you have to pick up on.
Friday.
I know.
Okay.
Tony said she'd come in if she had to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather, I, we vote on, I'd rather pick up the packets and we have to print them.
I get it, I do.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. There's not in the budget.
Policies to review, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, matter is not readily anticipated by the Chair.
I've got a matter.
Oh, you've got a matter too, okay.
You want me to go?
Uh-huh, I think.
Um clock on the school?
Yes.
Doesn't work.
I know.
Hasn't been working.
And I haven't had time to call the phone, but I got the right name of the person to contact.
Oh, excellent.
Yes.
Can you follow up when you get a spare minute and see how much that's gonna cost to repair?
I will.
Thank you so much.
Peter, you have some, right?
I do.
Okay.
I have two items, actually, Chairman.
Okay.
First item, forbid, is the uh, every year the committees um has public servants for the town, or not public servants, but you know volunteers for the town. Um every year, the town puts on a little get-together for them.
The select board does.
The select board does, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think that we should also not only do it for the volunteers, but we should do it for active personnel at work for the town and to show their little creation, appreciation towards them. Um I could tell you right now, they don't get it right now, any appreciation so much. Uh I could tell you, there's a lot of people that are overworked right now, um underpaid, overworked. And sometimes uh whether you have order pizzas, I used to do it at a previous job, I'd order pizzas for my whole shift, hundred fifty people out of my pocket, but that's how I used to operate. So a coffee and a donut, or a mug, or anything, it's, you know, I know budget's tight, goes a long ways to show people that you care about your staff, so. I think we do it for the volunteers, we should do it for our staff in town.
Are you talking about two different ones, or one for everybody?
I think the committees should be separate, cause they are committees, and the other people are employees of the town. So you got your volunteers and you have your employees, I think, I don't think it's any.
So with that being said, I agree with what you're saying, but I don't think that's something that employees should organize or set up for themselves, I think that's something that someone else should do, would you be willing to set something up for them?
Sure, I have no problem, and it's on, it's all volunteer, you don't have to come.
Right.
You know what I mean?
If you'd like help, I will gladly help.
Yeah, so I think it's, you know, I'll take it on as as part of the select board, no problem.
I think we should, I think the whole board should be.
And it goes a long ways, we're having trouble with staff right now, the morale is terrible in town right now.
We would be.
I'm surprised we don't have more leaning into our. Uh we gotta do something to change the culture in this town, the culture's not good right now. I can tell you that, um something's gonna be done, I don't know what whether it means, uh money doesn't solve everything. Sometimes a thank you very much for all you've done for us goes a long way.
I could ask a question, then are you thinking in terms of at the holiday season, or when would you wanna be doing this?
Um I'd I'd rather do it during nicer weather, but we're.
Springtime summer, early summer or?
Um when when is the, when is the one for the committee being done, soon, right?
That usually is done the beginning of December.
Beginning of December.
That's the.
I'd rather have something, if we could set up a table somewhere and have a little, you know, you know, one or ten pizzas or something to come in or whatever, and you wanna stop by on the way by to grab something on the way to a job or on the way.
That would be next to our, or possibly the school.
Well, I would, I would suggest that, yeah, I would suggest that.
Yeah, I'll work it out.
Yeah, you work it out, bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Time, place, cost.
Yeah.
Square it away with, you know, employees, make sure.
Administrator, yeah.
Work for them, make sure it works for them.
Yeah.
Fits their schedule and they'll likely actually attend, and then we'll.
Okay.
So I think it's the worst. Everybody's gotta be involved, so we know it can't be a Friday, cause they don't work Fridays, except for the police, oh you know, safety, right, by DPW. So.
And you need enough time to notify them that in fact, as opposed to saying next week, or they they, something they can put in their calendars that.
Yeah.
Gonna happen.
Yeah, so um maybe we'll look in in the spring, I don't know, I'll have to look and I'll maybe I'll go around and visit everybody and see if they think about a a time, I'm not, it's not something I wanna spring on, I'm hey, by the way.
No.
I'm gonna go around and ask all the uh, I'll ask the chiefs, the chiefs and the highway DPW director and see how they feel and.
It's also not, it's not cast in stone that the volunteer thing has to be in December either.
And and I don't want them to use their lunchtime to do this either, you know what I mean, this is gonna be something above and beyond their lunch.
So maybe.
They shouldn't have to use their own time to come to show that we appreciate what you do.
Well, Peter, then maybe to make it easier to, in terms of on you too, we should think in terms of spring.
Yeah, yeah.
So that there's enough time, enough time to find out everything, make the plans.
Plowing away, the show giving a pizza, I'd have to deliver it to the truck.
See you chasing down trucks.
I think it's Peter's Peter's suggestion, I think it's a great idea, I think he's probably already got some thoughts in his head, so I think we let him run with it.
I'll 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 put it.
And what he brings back, we'll talk about.
I'll put it down on paper and we'll go from there.
Good.
I first, but I'll get a date and I'll get, and I'll make sure everybody's pretty much on board with it, cause I'm sure, I don't, who wouldn't want this for your staff, you know what I mean?
Just FYI, when I worked for the town of Holden, the select board um did an employee appreciation every year. They did it um at a recreation area in the town. They gave the employees two hours off for lunch that day, and the select board did a cookout. So they did hamburgers, hot dogs, you know.
Cross my.
Very simple, you know, ordered potato salad from somewhere or whatever, um.
Nice.
And just acknowledged employees, those would.
Select board serve?
Yes, they did, um yeah, and they would acknowledge the length of service for people. We don't have a whole lot of length of service here unfortunately, but that was something that they had acknowledged who was there five years, ten years at, you know, those five-year intervals.
More reason to.
Yeah, so I I can sit down with the new administrator when they are here, and because I have other ideas, I mean, where I used to work, if you didn't burn any sick time that year, you used to get a nice certificate from the state, okay, with the governor's signature on it, or the commissioner's signature on it, um because you didn't use any sick time for the year, because they gave out some, we earned some sick time.
Yeah.
Just stuff like that means a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that both of them, or was that just?
That was just the first one.
Yeah, I thought you had two.
Uh well, I have a brain failure.
That's fine.
Uh oh, I got it.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
Administrative staff, is there a policy in place for exit interviews when somebody leaves their position?
Can I know, yes.
By the TA. Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
So I thought, yeah.
Okay, um has she been offered an exit interview?
Lori?
Yes.
I've talked to her, you know, I know what her.
One-on-one, in an office, just to interview, in an exit interview, you get to find out what your issues are in town. That's how else do you find out what's going on with certain people and why they're leaving, they they might not, you have to offer it to them, but they don't have to accept it.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't have to, but if we have a a policy in town, she should be offered an exit.
Ryan, Ryan did that.
Yeah, to sit down with her and see where the faults are in town or where the good things are in town, you know, maybe there are no faults, maybe I'm making all this up. Uh I don't think so, but I think it's just a good offer to have an exit interview for your administrative staff.